I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April 22, 2015. Commissioner Brown, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to the roll call. Mr. Petras, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Darden.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Rulon.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay, then we have two sets of minutes for review and approval tonight. I will be abstaining from the vote for either of these because I was not present on April 8th. The first set of meetings would be for the study session. Are there changes to those minutes or motion for approval?
I'll move we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and one abstention. Then for the regular Planning Commission meeting of April 8th?
I have one tiny edit.
Okay, where would that be?
And I gave it to Arlene, and that would be page five, second bullet, where it says most of the structures in the area provide for two-car parking onsite. And that was where I went, and I checked all the buildings around there, and it was really, if she could please change it to, "Most of the structures in the area provide covered onsite parking, and some include guest parking."
I'm sorry, where was this again?
It was the second bullet on page five.
Page five.
And where it says, "Most of the structures in the area provide for two-car parking onsite," and the findings were, and checking all the neighboring buildings, and it was, "Most of the structures in the area provide covered onsite parking, and some include guest parking." If that's okay.
Is that accurate for those who were there?
Yeah. I don't know if that's what was said or not.
Is there a consensus?
I know she took a pretty extensive parking survey of the area, so I think she did a very extensive parking survey of the area, if I recall from the meeting that night.
And that's the way you reported it?
Yes, I just gave the addresses.
Okay.
What they had, and things like that.
Okay.
This is summarized here quite a bit.
Okay, so if we can make that change, and otherwise is there a motion?
I'll move we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And one abstention. All right, that brings us to oral and written communication. At this point in the process, members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Having no cards and seeing no one step forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. Oh, please come forward. Sorry, I didn't see you.
He's here for the general plan?
No, he's not for the public hearing process.
We'll go ahead and take your card, and we'll call you at that time. All right, so we've moved on to the public hearing process. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to the questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item on our agenda tonight is item 8A 204 West Paseo de Cristobal Cultural Heritage Permit 14-496, the Petri Residence.
At the request of the applicant, due to the need to modify the project to reduce costs, we're asking this item be tabled to a future meeting.
I also move that the item be tabled.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes seven zero. That moves, sorry, that moves us to item 8B 1010 South Alcaminor Real Zoning Amendment 14-364 Site Plan Permit 14-365, Conditional Use Permit 14-366 Cultural Heritage Permit 14-367 Santiago Mixed Use. Mr. Taman?
Thank you, Chair Darden. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. The item scheduled tonight is being requested to be continued to a later date. This is due to the inability of the applicant to get the story polls up in time. The code requires 14 days, calendar days, before the Planning Commission hearing. After it was publicly noticed, the applicant did not get them up, and so is requesting that it be moved to the May 6th Planning Commission date.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I still move.
Wait. Is there anyone in the audience who came to speak on this issue?
Which one?
8B.
8B.
That's the Santiago project. Mr. City Attorney, if we want to open the public hearing and allow them to speak since they've come, and then continue it to the next date?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Okay, if you haven't yet filled out a card, please do fill out a card and bring that up with you. So I'll open the public hearing and invite anyone who wishes to speak on this issue to come forward to the microphone, and then provide a card to our recording secretary, please.
Hello, my name's Zachary Gomer. I live on Santiago. I am not very familiar with this process, so forgive me if I'm off. I have a couple of questions to better understand the project. I did notice that the, I don't know what you would call it, but the framing?
Story polls?
Yeah, they weren't put up in time, so I was kind of expecting it to be delayed. I am excited to see something going up there. I just don't know, it seems to maybe have a large impact. I don't know what kind of traffic studies have been done. Traffics are, and parking's already tight on that street, and I don't know where the residents are, that are going to be staying, and what is it, seven units, right? And then there's like 4,500 square feet of office space. Where are all those people going to be parking at?
Is it, Mal, is it appropriate for staff to answer his questions tonight, or for him just to get his questions on the record?
That's entirely up to the Planning Commission. Staff can answer, or we can postpone that.
Okay, is that your only question, or do you have a series of questions?
I have a series of questions, actually.
Why don't you go ahead and state them all, and get them all on the record, and then staff can briefly address them, or if there are more extensive answers required, they could meet with you afterwards and address them.
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay.
And then all that will be public record, right? So we can share with it. Okay, so that's good. I noticed that it was seque exempted. I'd like to know to what extent it was seque exempted, an old gas station. And I imagine that since it's old enough that there's probably really no environmental impact, whatever was there is probably cleaned up. I'm just guessing. In stormwater, it's probably not that big of an issue, but I am curious to see how that was determined. I looked on GeoTracker, and it was, the case was open back in the 70s, and it was open and closed on the same day. So it was probably a pretty basic case, and the EPA was definitely not as tight then as they are now. And, you know, of course, I want to be reasonable. Another one of my concerns is the height. I enjoy looking at that hillside, and I'm going to be looking at a giant building now instead of a hillside. So I'm curious about the height of the building as well. But again, I do want to mention that I am excited to see something going in there. So yay for that. I just think that it's incredibly large, and is going to have a huge impact on traffic and parking on my tiny little street.
Okay, and I think what we'll probably do, it looks like there's another speaker, so after she speaks, if she raises any additional questions, we'll allow Adam to address those, or if they're more complex, he'll meet you outside. But we invite you to come back to the next meeting when it will be on the agenda, and you'll be able to see the plans and get a sense of, you know, how some of the impacts that you've raised some questions about might feel to you.
Fine, and the meetings are monthly?
It's going to be May 6th.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jennifer Massey, and I live on Valencia, have for 30-something years, and I walk by this site every day, and it's nice to see something going on there, but I am just a little concerned. I just, it seems large, and so I just wanted to be sure that, I'm not familiar with what the height limits are today, and how much of a lot you can cover, and the setback requirements and everything else, and I just wanted to be sure that it follows the rules, that the project follows the rules, and we'll all be happy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Adam, would you mind just briefly addressing the main questions that the two parties brought up?
You know, I think what I'd like to suggest is that Adam can make himself available to the two speakers.
To them afterwards?
And I think the best thing for them is just to come in and look at the plans.
Okay.
And rather than getting into any project issues, right now the applicant's not here, and the staff report hasn't been put together, so I think it would be better just to wait and address the questions of the public with Adam directly.
Okay, can you meet them outside then, after the meeting? Or give them your contact information?
I can go right now.
Perfect. All right, great, thank you. Okay, well, we'll close the, see, no one else, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this? You want to speak to this issue? Please come forward.
Well, I'm Mike Lawrence. I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing, enhancing the city, but I, by looking at it, it seems like it's one of the biggest things on Alcaminor Real, second to, you know, a church, so it's massive. And my concern is parking. There's 23 businesses on that street, and there's only three parking spaces that are public on Alcaminor Real. Where are the rest of the people going to park? That's my concern. It's a massive, massive structure. So, you know, I know that there's neighbors, and we tend to always try to be safe in those streets because there's always an accident in front of 7-Eleven or O'Reilly's, and you're going to have another massive place of people coming in and out of those alleys and those streets. So that's our concern. And again, you know, on the weekends, there's always accidents on the freeway, so they use Alcaminor Real for their right-of-way, so that's my concern.
Okay, thank you for sharing it with us. And if you would like information about the parking, I believe Adam is meeting with some of the other residents outside, so he can answer that for you. Is there one more?
I live in 102, the apartment building right behind the structure, and there's a couple concerns. The mass scale of this thing is not only going to kind of block some light and some wind, and I'm also a little concerned about the traffic kind of going in and out of that building. There's already four or five cars that park in our space, and so it's just going to be a lot of traffic right there. So, and I've lived here for, since 2004, I bought the building, and, you know, it's kind of nice to have a little light in there, not like a massive structure. And with those sticks that you can see now, it's just, it's right to the edge of the lot, so it's a little bit, I'm all for beautification and making it look pretty, but I don't know if that size of a project is going to benefit, so.
Thank you. And is that your card right there?
Yeah.
Would you mind sharing it with the recording secretary?
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and those who wish some input from staff can meet Adam outside, and he can also take your information and make you aware of the next public hearing. Okay, so do we have a motion to continue this to May 6th?
We did.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I moved it.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Before the speech.
Oh, okay. I beg your pardon, I missed that.
That's okay.
So can you just repeat it for us, Fonny?
Yes, I had moved that the Planning Commission continued this item to the May 6th, 2015 meeting.
Can we have a second?
I just have a question, whether the public hearing is still open?
No, I'd like to close it.
Thank you, I missed it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. That brings us to item 8C, which will be amendments to the zoning map of the city of San Clemente, and to amend the San Clemente Municipal Code at Chapter 17.36 Commercial Zones, Chapter 17.40 Mixed Use Zones, Chapter 17.88 Definitions, and Section 17.24.110.1B Measurement of Height.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a...
Yeah, it's not listed, and I'm sorry. Commissioner Brown was just bringing to my attention that General Plan Amendment 15-049 is also part of this presentation, so.
Yes, both items, we're going to be presenting both of them together.
Right, but it just wasn't listed on the front page, so I hadn't listed it, so.
Okay.
We have accurately described the matter before us now, so let's move ahead.
Okay, so this is an introduction to General Plan Amendments and zoning amendments that were initiated by the City Council. The General Plan Amendments are to clean up items, make clarifications, and then make some City Council-directed land use changes. The zoning changes are proposed to make the commercial and mixed-use zones consistent with the new general plan and the amendments that are being proposed. So what we want to do is first explain to you that this is an introduction. We intend to revisit this item and continue to a date certain. So there's some items that need to be completed, and that's why we're requesting that the item be continued after this evening. That includes a environmental analysis, some additional drafting of amendments based upon the testimony tonight and the commission's feedback, and then just some additional mapping that needs to be completed. So that's, and our recommendation is to get your feedback and then respond to any questions at the next meeting and make changes as needed. So what we've done is organized tonight's meeting into three main parts, and the goal of that is to allow the full commission to act on as many items as possible. So the full, the first part of the meeting would include most of the items that are proposed in the packet. So there's 30 land use changes that are included in the general plan part of the meeting, and then there's 28 zoning changes that are in the zoning part of the meeting. So what we've done is gone through the conflict of interest maps and looked at which items would be within 500 feet of Commissioner property, and what we've identified is that the items, with the exception of the architectural overlay, so what we've done is listed those out tonight. So there's an item to extend the architectural overlay district. There is an item to deal with the mixed-use 3.2 area and mixed-use 3.1 area in the general plan, and then there is some similar type of changes for the zoning, as well as changing a mixed-use 3 area to residential medium density, and then there's some FAR density changes for neighborhood commercial-type zones. So with the exception of those changes, the full commission could act on the remainder of the things in part one. And part two would be to have the commission, with the exception of Commissioner Darden, take votes on items including the mixed-use 3.1 changes in the general plan, which includes like a policy and some standard changes, and then in the zoning ordinance, it's the changing of a mixed-use 3 lot to residential, and then the changes to the mixed-use 3.1 area. And then lastly, with the exception of Commissioner Rulon and Commissioner Brown, is to act on other items like the mixed-use 3, the items that I said that began...
I think you mean Darden and Brown.
Darden and Brown, I'm sorry. Darden and Brown, yeah, sorry.
Somebody's got to...
So, so everything else would be in this part three.
And so our plan tonight is to take straw votes as we move through the process. Those of us who can participate in those straw votes will participate in them, and then at the end of the process, whether that be tonight or actually the, it's going to be continued to another night, we will all be able to vote on the resolution itself. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. So the first part is the general plan items, as said in part one, and what I've done is I've included the list in Exhibit A of the staff report, so if we could go to that, I think it will really facilitate discussion. So it's the General Plan Amendment Report Attachment for Exhibit A.
The first, oh, no, the second Exhibit A.
And I've, I have taken out the items and put them into this PowerPoint that the full commission could act on right now. So what I recommend is to take a straw vote for the items on each one of these slides at a time. So it's part one. I think just for the sake of simplifying discussion, rather than going through one by one, what I wanted to do is have the commission, let me know any particular items that are of concern, and you want to have specific discussion on, or you have questions, and we poll those like a consent calendar, and we wait to act on those, and then we act on any items that the commission doesn't have any concern with.
Okay, so as we did with the general plan, we'll ask if there's anything on page one that anybody wishes to pull for discussion?
Yes.
And then move through the matrix.
According to this slide. Yeah, according to this slide. So in this case, it's items one through eight.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, these, we've had a number of, you know, two or three at least study sessions covering this material in the past, so this is all reflective of, you know, quite a bit of conversation coming up to here, correct?
Yes.
This incorporates that, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so is there, is there anything on page one that anyone wishes to pull for further cleanup at this time? Or I'm sorry, for further discussion at this time? Okay, nothing on page one? On page two? Tom?
Maybe, it might be good if maybe you advance the slide to the, we were doing that so people...
So people at home can see what we're talking about.
So any items from nine through 12?
It looks like 13 dropped off on the bottom.
Nine through 13 on page one, yeah.
Any, any changes, or any desire to discuss anything between nine and 13? Okay. Page three, which is items 14 through 19?
The one item to exclude is item 16 on that sheet, so we should, that's part three of the meeting.
Okay.
The exception of 16.
All right, so with the exception of 16?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting things confused.
Commissioner Brown, would you like to pull 17 and 18 for discussion?
Yes.
17, and my mistake, 16 is not excluded. I'm getting the zoning and the general plan mixed up, I'm sorry. So is there any, anybody that wants to speak about item 16?
No.
Okay. So 17 and 18?
Yes, please. And then 20 through 26?
20 through 26, what I've, I'm sorry, let me go back. So item 22, we need to wait on, and item 27? Here, I have it right here. Items 22, 27, and 29, we need to wait on.
Okay.
Everything else we can talk about.
How about 24?
24. Okay.
22 we wait?
22, 27, and 29. And so you... Twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. And so you said twenty-four, Don? Okay. Okay, anything else on that page, or shall we move to the final page? Final page, okay. Any comments or any discussion necessary on items twenty-eight and thirty? Twenty-eight, okay. Okay. So it looks like we will have discussion on items twenty-eight, twenty-four, eighteen, and seventeen. All right, did you want us to take a straw vote now, Chris, on the others? And then, okay.
Yes, please.
I'm curious about something. What if there's public comment on these items we're voting on right now? Shouldn't we receive that before we make a straw vote?
That's a good point. Mal, how should we handle, handle that and also facilitate staff's purpose?
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's a straw vote, so there's nothing official that's taking place with that straw vote. It's just to get a, a sense of where you are going forward, so we can take comment before we can take comment afterwards. It's your discretion. Because of the way that we're proceeding, there is some, there is some danger of comment being made on items in, in phases two and three of, of this meeting. So it might make sense to withhold that comment until those items are before the, the limited commission.
Okay, so we can always bring back up an issue if, for example, somebody commented on item four and their comment was illuminating, we can bring that back up for discussion at that time.
That's, that's correct. Alternatively, we could ask for comment on any of the items excluding those that were, that were listed as not belonging in this first phase.
I think it's complicated enough for us. I think that might be complicated for the audience, trying to figure out who has to recuse on what. So I think it makes sense for us to vote on all items except for the items that we're pulling for discussion and the items that are going to be discussed later with a, a limited commission. So do I need to clarify again which, what those items are?
Please.
Okay, the items that are being pulled for discussion are items seventeen, eighteen, twenty-four, and twenty-eight. The items that are, did you get that item? And then the items that are going to be discussed with a limited number of the commission will be items twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. Do I have, do I have it all, Chris? Just those three?
Yes.
Because sixteen is not included in that, that's correct?
Yes.
That's, that's with the, the zoning update, that sixteen is an issue?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I said twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. I'm sorry, it's kind of confusing. All right, so is there a, a motion to approve in a straw vote, the, the items other than those just listed?
Also move that we straw vote a vote on or approve all items except for twenty-four, twenty-eight, eighteen, seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. So should we look at the issues that Commissioner Brown brought up?
Yes.
Start with seventeen?
I also have the maps, if we could go to those areas, if you like.
And did you, did you want to voice a specific question about seventeen?
Yeah, seventeen, it says changes the map to show a street reflecting existing use right of way. Short street in the Marblehead Coastal Specific Plan cleanup, and I couldn't find the street. Could you please illuminate it for me where it is?
You, you're right, it's, it's not in this slide, I, I noticed that later. It's, it's a little, almost like a cul-de-sac street in Marblehead Coastal. It's, it's a mapping error, really, where a street is identified for residential purposes, like developing a home on a street, and that can't be done. So we're just clarifying it's a clerical item to change it to a street in the mapping. Does, does that make sense?
Will it be seen in the map?
It would be shown in the map, I just, I didn't.
Subsequent maps will show the proper alignment then. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and eighteen, Don?
Yeah, let's go to the area in concern here for eighteen, if you could, Chris?
Okay, it's, let's see, I think I can use this. So it's right here.
I got confused in this whole area down here, I guess eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty. We have looked at this so many times, and the floor area ratios and. Are we really sure that eighteen goes to mixed use and everything else goes to light industry? There, this is a, I know this is a council-directed change, I think, right? So I guess we don't have a lot of flexibility in that regard, but I, it looked to me like we're still, we have inconsistencies in that area, that's just why I was concerned.
I'll explain what this is about. This is the, I think a good way to explain this is the difference between if you were to take a development proposal and you have a conceptual set of drawings, and you have a, a detailed construction level of drawings. And that's really what's going on here. We have maps that have long time been hand-drawn for our zoning map and our general plan map. Now we're going to computer-type maps, which really identify certain types of issues, such as when a land use boundary does not follow a lot line, and that's what's going on here. There's a little part of this lot. Jim, is there any way you could get, so these slides aren't hidden anywhere? These slides right here, twenty-seven through twelve aren't hidden anywhere? Can I use this? And do you have, can you push shift on your computer?
Plaza Pacific.
You're making us dizzy.
It's a good, it's a good drive to the city.
There's a lot, but.
Oh, Jim!
I'll just explain it while he's doing that. So what we're proposing to do is to have the land use boundary, the mixed use, and the. So I, I can explain while he's, so, so what we're proposing to do is to fix that error, to have the land use boundary follow the lot line. That's the first thing that we're proposing to do. The second thing staff is proposing to do is to, it, that's really the nature of it, is to, to move that boundary so that the mixed-use boundary follows the lot line. And then on the opposite side, the light industrial designation follows the lot line, so we're, we're correcting both sides. Is that clear? It's a clerical, it's a clerical fix.
Look at the real map and have you explain it without getting dizzy here, it's all I want. Pick one, just pick any scale and just stay on it.
I just, I wasn't sure I hid these, because I didn't know if you wanted to go through everyone. So let's use this. So right here, there's a little piece right here. This little piece, and then up here, the land use boundary did not follow this lot line. You could see where this dark purple line is. It didn't follow that before.
No wonder.
This is supposed to be helpful tool, but.
But we love software engineers.
Okay, I'm just going to leave it like this.
Okay.
Can I, can the, I guess the TV audience could see the mouse, so I'll use that. So are there any questions about this item?
So part of it stays mixed use, and the other part is going to get shifted over to like parcel nineteen and become light industrial, is that?
Correct, so some of it is changing to mixed use, and some of it's changing to light industrial to follow the lot line.
Okay, thank you.
So rather than one lot having multiple designations?
Okay, yes.
Okay, I think that's clear. All right. Can we move on to twenty-four, Don? Okay. We can move on to twenty-four, but only if you're going to stop the spinning with the, with the slides.
Let me figure out where we are here, okay. Okay, so twenty-four is right here. So this area is currently in the general plan as mixed use one. And the city council had, oh no. You're talking twenty-four, right? Twenty-four. Okay, twenty-four, it's currently identified as mixed use one in the general plan. And the city council directed staff to initiate a general plan amendment to change it to neighborhood commercial two.
Okay, we're, and for the record, we, that was a, that going mixed use was a recommendation from the original focus groups and through the G-PAC, and went all the way through us. So after, you know, four years of public testimony, and there was an, an intent there from the planning center and all the vocalists to make that mix, so we could try to get that whole area become a kernel redevelopment. So now we're just going to dial it back and have it stay as it is with holly tires and, and the laundry there. So that's, we're just, we're taking four years of public testimony and sharing and everything else, and we're just going to, we're not going to, we're going to dial it back, because that's the way it's going to be. That's what the, the direction was, I guess, is that right?
This is being proposed in response to policy direction we received.
Okay, this was a direction from the council, so there's not a lot of wiggle room, we're just, okay.
Well, and the thought with the council was that if it doesn't show on the map, but the rest of this area here, all this is neighborhood commercial all the way down. And they didn't see the logic in the mixed use application in that particular location, and that's why they changed it.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay, and then twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, similar, we received policy direction for, on February third from the council to change a mixed use for area in the general plan to residential high density.
And did you make council aware of the fact that the reason the planning commission thought this area needed to remain mixed use was because we thought that it needed to be visitor-serving in order to meet the requirements of the coastal commission?
I recall there being some mention of, we provided some background, I don't know if we, I, I can't say that we really spoke, focused a lot on visitors.
I would say that they were aware that this was a, you know, something that the coastal commission may or may not require. It'll go through the coastal commission for their approval, so either they'll allow it or not. But they thought, even with that knowledge, that it just didn't make sense that this will ever become commercial, given the existing lay of the land and the applications of the pierable specific plan that will never become, come to fruition for a number of reasons. So they figured just, you know, designate it what it is, and that's, that was what they did. There was actually some, I think some people from the public that spoke on the item as well.
Yes, I did see that in the record, there were some.
Yeah, and also, that was, it was mixed use for a while, and nothing ever happened in that, in this area. And so they decided to put high-density residential.
Well, I know that we've had a disconnect between the pierable specific plan.
Well, it was disconnected.
In this area, this kind of ridlocked everything that possibly would have sorted out. But we left it mixed use because of the feedback we'd gotten from the coastal commission. I went with the planning staff, and we went up to visit with them when we were working on the coastal element of the general plan. And so the feedback we got, like shortlists and, and that, that hotel now gone to, you know, senior housing was the same thing. They, they, okay, fine, but go give us some more rooms somewhere else, so they were kind of bean counting there.
No, this was, you know, there were concerns about parking, obviously.
Always has been.
Always has been in this area, and a lot of the neighbors came out and said, don't do that, just keep it residential.
I mean, because of the fact there's no parking, it was almost like having visitor-serving in the bank, you know what I mean? You can count it, but it would never, you know, so to speak.
Why, why, why leave it like that unless it's going to come to fruition?
Okay. Are there any other comments about items seventeen, eighteen, twenty-four, or twenty-eight? If not, is there a motion that we have a straw vote indicating our approval of those items as well?
Since I pulled them all, move that we, we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Those items pass seven zero.
Okay, the second part of this meeting, I'm going to hand this over to our consultant, Jim Hare. He's going to discuss the zoning, first part of the meeting.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Jim Hare, consultant of the city. And since my job is to provide consistency between the zoning ordinance and the general plan, much of the policy changes that Chris reviews when he goes through the maps and things are, are being tracked one for one with the things that are going on in zoning. So for example, in the part one component regarding zoning, essentially, we are in the zoning maps, and Chris is doing all the work on the maps as well. So for, one for one, there, the maps are being made to match up. In addition to that, then, also before you, is two complete copies of zoning documents, the commercial zone component of title seventeen and the mixed-use zone component of title seventeen. And as we have reviewed with your commission and study session, essentially there, where we have made changes in format, the boxes or tables are colored red, but the fill that's within those tables, if they're black, it's merely carrying the existing components of code forward. There are a few new zones and a few new criteria within zones. And again, as a part of this discussion, we are excluding MU three point one, MU three point two, NC two, and the NC three zones from this discussion. But I stand ready to answer any questions that your commission may have with regard to those zone documents that have been attached and the, and the redlining that's contained within them.
So you're on exhibit A, that's the document that we should be referencing at this point, is that correct? Because I can't, I can't read.
Actually, actually, exhibit, exhibit A of the zoning report is merely a color-for-color reflection of the changes to the general plan map, which your commission has just gone through. It's, it's re-reflected in the zoning, because everywhere that the general plan is changing a designation, the zones are being changed along with it. So my sense is your commission has really already discussed those, those items. Then with regards to matters within the zones, those are carried forward in the broader zoning documents. So if you want to use that, that listing as your marker for going through them, we can, we can work from that standpoint.
I had a question in a way then, because on like item seven, eight, nine, ten-ish in that area where we're going to mixed use, I thought what the council approved was like a mixed-use overlay.
You know, Don, seven and eight or three point one, which I can't comment.
Changed.
So that would be.
We can't talk about that now?
Right, right, that, those changes are later in the discussion.
Okay.
Should we, should we pull those numbers that we can't discuss right now, like we do with the general plan items?
You certainly can.
Yeah, because, because to be clear, what I, and I'm, and I'm sorry that I'm not, I'm not getting how you want us to proceed.
No, that's fine.
Do you want us to, do you want us to do much as we just did with Chris? And pull any items that, that, I understand that this tracks with the, with what we just went through.
It tracks with, if, if in attachment one, you wish to pull numbered items off of the list as you did with the general plan discussion, we can do so, and some combination of me or me and Chris. And some combination of me or me and Chris can respond to those. Where, where I was headed was to go to the broader draft of the zoning codes that are attached as Exhibits, as Exhibits B and C. If there were any questions, you have seen those before, and this would be an opportunity for you to raise any questions in reading those documents as well. But if you want to start with the, with Exhibit A and the numbered list, we can certainly start from there.
I just had one question in that area. Unfortunately, she can't discuss it, I guess. But I guess we'll talk about it later. It seemed to me, we'll just talk about it later.
Yeah, if it has to do with 3.1 and 3.2, I understand that those are, those are map changes that, that are part of the second and third phases of this evening's discussion.
So it would be helpful then, if we're gonna take a straw vote on Exhibit A and then move on to B and C, if we could eliminate those that need to be part of the more limited discussion. Can you call those out for us, Jim? And I, I do have one that I missed in, in the discussion of Chris's material that I would like to look at. So that's, that's number 15.
Okay. The, the items which would be excluded under our, under our process here for the first phase are, is Item 16, Item 22, Item 24, Item 25, and Item 26.
Okay. All right. And then I would like to discuss Item 15. Is there another item? Are there any other items that anyone else would like to bring up?
What you're saying, like Items 7, 8, 9 are, we can't talk about because you, because it's 3.1?
At this time.
Okay.
There would be an opportunity to talk on them later in the.
Well, I don't understand. We just, we just pulled 16, 22, 24, 25, 26.
Yes, so shouldn't 7, 8?
7, 8, 9 too, also should be.
Shouldn't 7 and 8?
7 and 8 and 9 are the.
Because it's 3.1.
No, that, that is a different matter because the, the, it's, it's safer just to exclude those. We can talk about them later. And they do involve the MU 3.1 area. It's simpler to do that.
Because if we can talk about them, I would like to talk about them. But I was under the impression that because it was the same mixed use zone, that I wouldn't be able to, even though it's nowhere near my property.
Okay, the reason why, why I think you can talk about them now is because the area that is a conflict of interest deals with standalone residential uses. And those areas pertain just outside the downtown core. And this, these changes are in North Beach.
Right.
So there, there's, they're way outside the 500 feet.
It was just my impression that because they were also, because we were also talking about Zone 3.1, that I couldn't talk about these as well, even though they were in a different geographic area. But it's.
Well, Kristen, please clarify if those 3.1 changes that are intended for North Beach would also apply to the areas of conflict of interest or not.
Thank you, Jim.
It's easier just to exclude them. I mean, I, I think there's a policy that's being changed in standards, and there is a sentence that's being added that, that I think complicates, I would just exclude it.
Okay, all right. So other than 7 and 8, are there, are there any other items that anybody would like to pull? Okay, so then if we can, if we can have a motion that includes all items except for 26, 25, 24, 22, and 16, and 8, and 15, and 8, and 7?
And 9? 9 one of the ones?
Was 9 one of the ones? But I don't think 9 is affected.
No, I thought I heard 9, but maybe I'm mistaken.
He, Don is interested in, do you want to discuss 9? Because that's not 3.1.
No.
Okay, not 9.
Okay, so let's, we'll try this again. 7, 8, 16, 22, 24, 25, 26, and then also 15? Because I just had a question on that. So if, if we have a motion.
So I will move that we take a straw vote on all, on accepting all of the items except for the ones that the chair just mentioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye opposed? Okay. My question, Jim, was just, if I had to reference the map here. It looked like 15 was in Los Molinos, but yet it also had the, the architectural overlay added. So is that now going to be Spanish colonial revival, or am I misreading the map?
I'm sorry, which number is it?
Number 15?
There's two things happening there. One is to, yes. 15, the area is being changed from M2, or C3, I think it's C3, to MU2, mixed use 2. And that includes a pedestrian, a pedestrian overlay and an architectural overlay. So there's mapping changes that are being done. Currently in our zoning code, that area is zoned C3. There is no C3 now. We're moving towards MU2 in that area.
What is the architectural overlay?
The architectural overlay in the general plan has existed for some time. The zoning code has not shown the architectural overlay there.
But what is, is it SCR? Is it?
Oh, in that area, it's Spanish colonial revival.
So this is a Los Molinos area where we're now gonna be putting, we're putting an SC? The zoning code is gonna have an SCR overlay on?
That's the direction that I understand. That, that, that when you look at the policy later in the meeting, when we're gonna have a discussion about the architectural overlay, is the discussion was to extend the overlay between the downtown core area and North Beach.
Was that, was that your question? Was that what you were wondering?
I was wondering, my question is about the architectural overlay, yeah.
I think that the intent always that was for that not to extend to Los Molinos, but just on the El Comunal Corridor.
Yeah.
Which is why I'm asking the question.
So maybe we should get direction on what the planning commission thinks about the, if this is in fact covering into Los Molinos on Calle de los Molinos, back here, these two streets right here. So these lots right here and this lot right here. Unfortunately, I can't pull it up on the map. The question is, is the overlay extending to those lots there?
No, in the current general plan, it's required to have Spanish, in the 1993 general plan, is identified as an architectural overlay that required Spanish colonial revival architecture. So we're carrying that forward.
But what about?
We're not changing anything. We're just making the zoning code match the general plan.
Well, the general plan, I think we're reading it from Palazada all the way down, and it, or to El Portal, and it stopped there. I think there's a gap in there. Is that what, we're trying to close that way it came through on the general plan?
Well, if we could.
Yes, I, I think, at least the issue as I see it, is that the current general plan calls for Los Molinos to have, to not have that architectural, the SCR architectural overlay. It's supposed to be like an eclectic kind of space, so. So that's why, this is a good catch. That's why I, that surprised me, that it's an SCR overlay. But I, I believe that's our current, within our current general plan.
Again, I think some.
I don't have those maps in here. No, I don't have those. Can, can we access the internet from here? We'll get them for you.
Yeah, I think this would be a big surprise to the property owners in that area. Does, can we have a motion for a, a vote?
I will move that we take a straw vote on eliminating the zoning ordinance change for Item 15.
Second.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Well, I mean, this doesn't make sense. I mean, it seems like it's an accident.
I think that we want to clarify that a little further.
Can we, hold on just a second. Commissioner Crandall is saying that.
I'm gonna abstain from that. I don't have enough information to call one way or the other. I have to do more study on that area.
Well, perhaps it could be one of the issues that we discuss further when this comes back. If you could research it, is, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, a straw vote doesn't hold you into anything anyway. But, okay, so we'll, we got that direction to clarify more in the next meeting on kind of the direction of why it's, why applied and, you know, also more information on the Los Molinos area, so we can make a better informed decision.
Okay.
Well, I, I have the, I have the background information now. I think what would help me, coming back to the commission, is what does the commission think should be there? I can tell you that for, up until 2014, it's been required to have Spanish colonial revival architecture. Should that change? That, that, that's what I need to know in order to.
For these particular lots?
Yes.
Yeah, for what you've called out in 15, I think.
I agree.
The answer is yes, because that's part of Los Molinos, which is a different, which is in some sort of area that doesn't have.
So Chris, to clarify for you, I mean, I know that we incorporated these lots back here for the.
Those were included. Yes.
And these lots right here, the actual landies may be okay as far as changing MC3, but these lots here, if these lots here up to 14.
Yes.
Should not include these Spanish colonial revival overlay. That's what we're looking for. So we'll provide more information about those particular.
And probably when I made the motion for the straw vote, I should have specified that it was only really for the overlay. You know, I think the, the zoning, the change in the zoning itself probably isn't, isn't an issue for me, anyway.
Why don't we just discuss a whole item on the, at that time? Okay. And Commissioner Brown just made a suggestion. If it seems that we're jumping around a lot and we're, we're trying to skirt a lot of issues, Commissioner Brown and I own property that touches some of the new zones. And so we need to recuse on those issues. And unfortunately, it's not as simple as just taking, you know, one large item at a time. So staff has very kindly found, you know, a way to ensure that we're not weighing in on issues where we might have a conflict of interest. So just to under, so that you may understand the dance that, that we're trying to do up here to make sure that, that we respect those conflict of interest rules.
Okay, are there any other items that the commission wanted?
No, I think that's the only one on that, so I think we're ready for B and C.
I think Jim wanted to also go through Exhibit B.
That's what I said. We're ready for B and C.
Okay, got it.
I did have a question on the elimination of the regional commercial zone. I just want to know how that was gonna affect the Marblehead outlets.
Commissioner Ruin, the Marblehead Coastal Center is within a specific plan. So all of those rules that are designed particularly to affect it are still gonna be in full force and effect. When we, when we embarked on this particular phase, it was to do the commercial zones somewhat out of phase with the general plan and zoning, and zoning ordinance consistency work. We are studying ways of reintroducing specific plan areas back into the primary zones, but there's no, there's, there's no loss in the coverage of zoning because all of that is contained within the specific plan. It remains in full force and effect.
So the, so, so the zone definition isn't part of our zoning, for that, won't be any part of our zoning ordinance. It would be part of that specific plan.
And it always has been.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I had a similar, kind of an overall global comment between Exhibits B and C. Exhibit C, your mixed use, you explain where each mixed use area is, and it describes its boundaries and where it goes. And it's, I think it's fabulous, you know, as, for the intent page of that zoning change for Exhibit C. But when I go back to Exhibit B, to kind of pull off Mr. Ruin's thing, I would suggest like neighborhood commercial and community commercial zones, or you expand those and tell us where those CC 1, 2, and 3s are. You kind of lumped in one little line. I mean, in other words, expand the description you put in Exhibit C for the mixed use zones, concept into the, so that, you know, somebody comes on our website from Kukamungan, wants to look for, bring a business down here, that they know where CC 1, NC 1, 2 is, NC 1, 3 is. You know, there's a short description of where each one is contained. Because what you did on the other one is great, and I just asked, asked you to emulate that on B as a comment.
Okay, absolutely.
To pair it off Commissioner Ruin's thing on C, we completely eliminate regional commercial zone, and we, like we scrubbing it off the map. And I would suggest we kind of keep a little hook there and say, for regional center, we have one, it's Marblehead, and refer to the specific plan. I don't know what everybody else thinks about it, but, you know, because in our line here, it's completely scratched out. But I, I throw that to the commission for a comment, because I think, Jimmy, you kind of jogged my memory on that. Does anybody else have any other words?
Yes, I was kind of looking, any, is there support for that, for other commissioners also have the same?
I guess the, my question would be is how, I mean, it's a good, it's a good point. You know, how necessary is it to have that reference into the specific plans?
And, and again, with regards to particularly the commercial zones at this moment in time, part of this is, it's, we're kind of, we're kind of, we're kind of working on a house while it's on a trailer moving. And so it may well be that at the end of the process, we're all of the consistency, because the next part of the zoning consistency work program will be bringing back all of the zones for you to review. And our expectation is there might be further changes to these exhibits. We, we do want you to, we, we will want the council to adopt them in some form at this point in time. So we maintain all the support and all the structure that's already there and already applicable, and build in the new things that the council has asked us to do and that your commission is in the process of commenting on. But when we go back and do other work on it, there are other regional commercial zones. And again, if, if we are capable of putting the specific plan zoning into the zoning code at large to have it more, more accessible for someone who's using the code, then it may well be that this, that this zone will actually reappear in the code.
I'm really only talking about 1736010, Purpose and Intent. Just those three paragraphs there, how your equivalent of 174.40, 0.010, Purpose and Intent of the mixed use zone is very descriptive. I can look at MU2 and I know where it's at.
Okay.
You know, all I'm saying is, I, I found, you know, I'm an introduction guy. I knew to my, going on my website, I looked at 4010. I know exactly where every mixed use zone is. And then I go look at the commercial zones, and in the intent, you just list NC 1, 1, NC 1, 2, and I say, geez, where are those at, you know? Just the purpose and intent, paragraph, paragraph, that's the only thing I'm talking about.
Pardon me, Commissioner. We, we will be back to you on continuance. We'll look at that, and, and it's quite likely you will see something drafted into that hole in your next meeting.
All right. Shall we continue on Exhibit B then? I, I thought perhaps Mr. Hare had.
Or you want to go?
No, no, I, I, I am open to your comments. You've had the documents before you for, for some weeks now, and it gives you an opportunity to.
Okay, are there additional, Don, you have additional comments you want to start?
Page three, gunsmith, gun shops. And it's prohibited in NC 1, 1.2, 1.3, wherever some of those might be. But when I look back in mixed use, on page six of mixed use, I can have with a conditional permit, gunsmith, gun shops, and every mixed. I can have, with a conditional permit, gunsmith, gun shops in every mixed use zone in the city. And so I guess, is it good to have a resident above a gun shop with children? Should we really think about that a little bit?
The general policy that came out of the general plan was, for the mixed uses, was to put in uses that are similar to the neighborhood commercial uses, so we tried to carry those forward in there. We will revisit that and look at that more carefully.
Did you have a comment on that?
No, not on that specific one, but it's another usage here.
Okay. Shall we try to work through page wise? How about we go on page four? Are you on page four?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you?
Medical marijuana dispensaries, zip, right? Right. Nothing.
If there's not a character in the box, it's not permitted use.
Not permitted is...
Okay.
Okay, all right.
How does that, is that affected by state law at all, since it's a...
This is reflective of the existing code. No changes proposed at this time in any respect with regard to medical marijuana dispensaries.
So if someone wanted to open a dispensary in town, they would, we were saying they can't...
You have a specific prohibition at the head of each of the zones. If you'll go back to page two, under B, prohibited uses, as kind of a double bootstrap, it actually spells out that they're prohibited. And you see that prohibition reflected in zone by zone, in chapter by chapter of the code.
And I'm just concerned about the, since we've got this complete blanket prohibition on this one kind of business that is illegal business in California, what's our legal liability in that? Maybe our...
It's probably a question for me, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. There's a Supreme Court case from about two years ago argued by my firm. The Supreme Court actually stated that cities have police power to ban, to permit, to regulate dispensaries. So we have the power to ban if we want to. Most cities in Orange County have banned them outright. Santa Ana regulates. Everybody else pretty much has a blanket ban, and that is allowed under state law. Even though certain kinds of dispensaries are permitted under state law, we have the police power to ban them, and we're doing that. So this is directly in line with Supreme Court precedent.
That was specifically done by Steve Knoblock, who was a city council member at that one time, who brought that issue up. It was voted, it was voted on that matter.
Okay, so page five. Any comments on page five?
Yeah, under hospital, do you get a three in there for some reason down there, right above lodging?
I'm sorry, we are on page five?
Yes, hospital.
Just kind of a three sitting there?
Oh.
Typo, or what is it?
Yeah, that is a typo. That number belongs in the right-hand column. Thank you.
Page six?
It'll be a note, yes.
Hey, page six?
Just a minute.
We clear on that one? Do you have something, Wayne?
Well, I don't know if this applies. It says convalescent homes. That doesn't apply to sober living, or does it?
I believe we're not allowed to regulate sober living. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, commissioners, yeah, when it comes to sober living facilities, we have to be very careful with our regulations for facilities that are six and under. They're treated like residences. But this would not be the same as sober living.
All right, thank you.
Seven? Anything on page seven? How about page eight? Don, is there a note on yours?
Yeah, under restaurants, I think it is, about outdoors seating with up to 16 outdoor seats or four tables is prohibited, the entire line, but it's permitted under a miscuse. So I'm wondering why we... In other words, you have a lot of questions when you go between the two ordinances, is what I'm really trying to say here. And that's where I'm really coming from, is how you track them together. I kind of laid them out on a table together, and that's where I came up with gun shops underneath residence. There's a lot of other question I have when you don't do this concurrently. But anyway, we allow it for mixed use areas, I think.
Okay, so let me, you're saying outdoor with more than 16 outdoor seats and/or four tables? And it's MC in this table, and you're saying that in the mixed use tables, it's coded differently?
It's MC, right?
Yeah, it's across.
Or C? It's C in mixed use, whereas prohibited in commercials, is that right?
I see. We'll double check those.
Yeah. Today, I did a lot, and I recommend the staff do that, go back, because there's just, when you look at both of them side by side, put them on a table and do a page turn, there's a ton of other questions. We're just kind of blowing through here.
That's good advice. That's good advice. Again, this is meant to be replicative of what's in the code now. So, because we're not recommending changes in the uses in these categories other than the red columns. So we'll go back and double...
I just suggest staff do a page turn.
I appreciate that, thank you.
There are inconsistencies quite a bit.
This is not, this is not the exercise that I was expecting this evening. And I'm glad that, no, I'm delighted that you pointed us towards that.
Well, my question was, I thought this is the exercise, I thought this is what you wanted us to do.
No, I was merely, yeah, no, I have asked for your commission's comments on anything in here that you wanted to direct our attention to. We've gotten huge value out of you pointing out things that really aren't even actually intended to be in here. So the general warning is to go back and revisit each of these cells, and we will do that.
Okay, all right.
I still have a question on page eight for amplified sound. Was there any change in any of these at all?
There should not have been.
Okay, all right.
I'm lacking confidence now.
All right.
You're right.
Page nine? Okay, hearing nothing.
I thought, one quick thing, I thought we were, we have Internet access studio, Internet cafe. That's, I thought we were actually going to be removing that from the zoning ordinance. Something archaic.
Yes, well, that's another thing we'll coordinate. I just eliminated it last night.
Yeah, page nine.
I didn't get the memo yet.
Do those still exist?
How about massage? On page nine.
Did you want to discuss massage?
Never mind. Or, I guess there's changes coming with massage?
Yes.
After last night?
Yes.
Okay, page 10? Okay, all right, doesn't look like there's anything on page 10. It doesn't seem like it's, like you need us to take a straw vote on that, because that's mostly just items we want you to take over that.
Exactly. It's reminder to staff to reproof.
Okay. Anything on the standards? Better a part of Exhibit B? Page 11?
Except for the Internet cafes and number 18.
Okay. All right, good catch. Page 12? Okay, page 13?
Is everybody in the commission on the NC1, 2 standard? I mean, the top of roof and the plate, you've all argued that out in design review and the study sessions before, and everybody's comfortable with those numbers and everything?
All right, page 15? 16? 17? And that brings us to Exhibit C. Did you, was there anything, Jim, you wanted to say about Exhibit C, or you want us just to go through the same exercise?
Yes, I would, however, indicate to you that with regards to, with regards, the mixed use zones are an extraordinarily long chapter within the code. All the changes that we have included occur prior to page 23. So at that point, it's simply graphics and re-recitals of what's already in the code, as is everything that's in black prior to that point in time. We will also take your advice and consideration with regards to the use table and in terms of going through and reviewing that cell by cell again on these as well. And I will also remind your commission that comments on the MU 3.1 or MU 3.2 are withheld for the time being out of these tables.
Okay, so maybe the most efficient thing to do at this point, rather than me calling out each of the page numbers, are there any comments on any pages within this section other than on zones 3.1 or 3.2?
Could I comment on this page one of the three, the red paragraph on the North Beach Elcomerial Mixed Use Zone? Because what the council, I thought, in their resolution, which is back here somewhere, was it was supposed to be an overlay. Is that correct? Now we're putting a whole new ordinance in here as mixed use for the whole North Beach area. But the council resolution buried back here another 80 or 90 pages, I thought was just supposed to be an overlay.
There are parcels in the MU 2 in North Beach, and that's what this is descriptive of, not the entirety of it. Just those parcels which are MU 2.
Don, you're remembering that there is certain lots that do have a MU overlay in North Beach, but not the whole area is overlay. A lot of it is straight.
I thought that the council direction from February was to look at a North Beach overlay. And now we're rezoning a lot of North Beach as mixed use. Is that what we're doing here?
No, just the lots over by Cali Lago with the overlay. The whole of North Beach is basically mixed use.
It is now?
Well, right now, it's C2, and so we're changing it to...
So the U-Haul and the car wash and everything else is going to go to mixed use? That was council direction?
That's what the map indicates.
Yeah, I know, but that's...
I had wondered about that, too.
See, that's why I couldn't talk earlier, whatever, is when I looked at the council resolution, it was for an overlay. And you're rezoning the whole area.
Actually, right now, the C2 zone is a mixed use zone. C2 is a mixed use zone. It was amended to be a mixed use zone. So basically, we're just cleaning up an old zoning ordinance designation that was never fixed and changing it to what is consistent with the MU standards that we have now.
So we've been nonconforming down there for years?
Well, no, it's not nonconforming. It was just called a weird thing. Currently, right now, the general plan has always been mixed use for that whole area. So the general plan designation has been mixed use. In the zoning code, for whatever reason, I can't remember why, it's been so long, we didn't fix the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the general plan. We kept it C2. I think because there was a thought we were going to do a North Beach specific plan, we never got around to it. So we have this kind of old designation way back from like the 1983 zoning ordinance called C2 there. And to make things consistent, all we did was just amend the C2 zone to allow mixed use in it. So it's always been designated mixed use. We're not changing it. We're just making it consistent with the general plan designation. It was there for years and years and years, and it's been carried over to this general plan. Now, there's a certain spot, if you look in your map here, I don't know what page this is, but in this map here, over by Cali Lago, where we didn't want to create nonconforming uses on Lago that are industrial C3 right now. So we did an overlay so that the underlying uses would remain conforming, but still have the opportunity, should we want to redevelop it into mixed use. Is that, am I stating anything?
I just got educated.
Okay. So anything on page two? I'm going to go through a little more rapidly, so shout out if you have something. Page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Don, you have something on six?
Well, no, just the same thing on, oh, convenience stores? On mixed use, we don't allow it in mixed use 5. It's prohibited in the surf zone. It's a blank. There, we got to, we're going to try to rejuvenate that whole area.
And no grocery store, so...
No grocery store down there?
I will double check that. That column was picked up from the earlier code, so we can, we'll visit that and look at it.
Yeah. Okay, page seven, good catch, Don. Page eight? Page nine?
I'd like to get a definition of congregate care facilities.
Jim, can we have a definition of congregate care facilities, please?
Another book comes out.
1728110.
Want to read it?
Yeah. It's a short one, I'm sure.
Actually, isn't too bad. Congregate care facility means a facility for senior citizens that is arranged in a group setting and includes independent living and sleeping accommodations in conjunction with shared dining and recreational facilities. No congregant care units shall contain kitchens.
Okay, so it's for seniors. Okay, thank you.
Okay, page 10?
Yeah, let's look under manufactured home, mobile homes, page 10. It's prohibited everywhere but in the surf zone? We can put trailers in the surf zone? That's what we want to do? Mobile homes, manufacturing homes are all, the only area where it's allowed and everything else is prohibited?
Again, reflective of existing code.
Yeah, I just, we're trying to rejuvenate the whole South Elcomerial area off, so let's put a trailer park in there.
Mobile home park.
Mobile home, sorry.
It's actually not mobile home. It's actually a manufactured house, subject to the same requirements as individual homes and with standards and criteria in the code. So to the extent that you have single-family homes down there, it's possible...
But it's prohibited in every other mixed use zone in the city.
But it's not, yeah, okay.
That's okay. I mean, that's what we intend, that one zone can do that, okay. I don't know.
No, I think that's a good question. So why would we allow it in that zone but not in any other?
I'm, I was here for a time. I don't know why it is that way.
This is your fault, Jim.
That's all right. Go ahead and blame me. One of the possibilities is that you do have the capability of detached single-family homes in that area, and that's one way of building a detached single-family home. That would be, that'd be a guess that I would make, looking at it from the outset.
Perhaps this would be a good thing to bring back and just, you know, share your analysis of the situation with us.
Then another item, then further down, which is restaurants with drive-through. And we only allow it in the surf zone. And I know we got a couple of mixed use zones up and down Elcomerial. And the first thing that comes to mind is Pedro's on both North and South Elcomerial.
All right, well, also, yeah, Taco Bell.
Yeah, I just...
So I think it sounds like if staff would look to see if this is consistent with the general plan and with our policies regarding drive-throughs, and then report back to us on that.
Might want to go back and look at the commercial zones, too.
My memory may be fuzzy, but I think in the general plan, we're saying that the existing areas where we allow drive-throughs will continue to allow them, but not in newer areas. But that's, like I said, my memory may be fuzzy on that.
Yeah, I mean, we just need to...
But that's a good issue, too. But that's a good issue, too. You know, what you say sounds familiar, but it'd be good to take a look at that and make sure we're supporting the general plan. Okay, page ten? Page, I'm sorry, we just did page ten. Page eleven?
I, did I miss something? I had written down here at the very end, banks. I didn't see financial institutes anywhere in the entire, entire listing. Did I miss it way up front? I went through a couple times and.
Jim? I'm sorry, the other Jim. He was raising his hand.
I just wanted to mention, I looked into the residential zones, and all the residential zones allow manufactured homes. So, I think that the mixed use zone, because they allow standalone residential, allow manufactured homes as well.
Mm-hmm.
Rational.
Okay, so it's actually consistent. All right.
Yeah, banks are in here on page number eight.
Okay, I missed it then.
Yeah, on page number eight, banks at my.
Thank you.
Okay, so nothing else on page eleven, then? Page twelve? Okay, and then moving on to the standards, page thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And this is an area, obviously, with new information. Anything here? Any concerns here? Okay, sounds like none. All right.
With MU 2, we're good with that part? I thought, I thought we were shifting into twenty-seven, thirty to thirty-five or somewhere, or maybe I got it wrong.
You're talking about pipe?
Mm-hmm, top of roof.
MU 2 was always a little lower than the rest.
Okay.
Okay, Bart, you good?
Don't you?
Yes. On sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay, seventeen? Good there? We can't comment on eighteen.
That's out of bounds.
Nineteen is the same. Twenty, same. Twenty-one, any comments on twenty-one? Okay.
And from there on out, it is replicative of existing code.
Okay. All right. So, does this conclude what we need to cover in section one?
Yes.
Or the all-scape section of this evening? Okay, Jim, you had suggested that we consider taking a break and letting Mr. Panis present his issue. Is he here to do that, or shall we just, shall I hand the gavel over to?
He is.
He is?
So, what we, if he would like, so that our commissioners that have to recuse can discuss the other item, what you could do is table this item for later in the meeting, and then we'll come back after we hear the Brent's mascot ordinance, and then come back to this.
Okay, all right.
That's the direction of the question.
It seemed logical to me to do that. I'd actually wanted to have Mr. Panis give his presentation before this, but since he was at the other meeting, he wasn't able to do that. So, if we're, if we're open to that, what I would like to do is just take a five, literally five-minute break, just for, you know.
Table this.
Yes, let's see if we could table this and then take a five-minute break.
I move we table the ordinance discussions and take.
Until later this evening? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene with Mr. Panis. Okay, I bring the meeting back to order, and as we've tabled the earlier item, we're going to move on to item eight D, zoning amendment fifteen dash zero eight six, prohibition of commercial mascots. And for the record, we have just received two written communications, both from the Liberty Tax Service. Okay, Mr. Panis?
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Tonight, I bring before you a council-initiated zoning amendment to prohibit commercial mascots in the city of San Clemente. The zoning ordinance does not address commercial mascots currently. Commercial mascots are basically a form of advertising in which a person, an animal, or some sort of representative mascot directs people to a business, either by waving or pointing in the direction of the business. Reason why mascots, or we're looking to prohibit mascots is because they can distract traffic, they can cause delays in traffic, and also that mascots also draw attention away from traditional forms of signage such as building signage and that most people rely upon for identifying a business. The proposed amendment will be amending the sign matrix and listing commercial mascots as a prohibited sign type, and also amending the definition of sign. And if you have any questions of, on that, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I wish to disclose that I provided information to the city regarding how other cities deal with human mascot issues, and I'm willing to hear all the information on this issue before making a decision.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah, I do have a question for you. Do we currently on the books have ordinances keeping people from distracting traffic, keeping them from blocking sidewalks and directing traffic? Whether or not they're in a costume or not?
I believe the Sheriff's Department does. I couldn't honestly say.
So, that's maybe more of a penal code issue than a zoning code issue, perhaps? Is that, is that?
Yeah, that would be more accurate, yeah.
Okay. Jim?
I was wondering, do we, we talk about safety and traffic issues. Do we have any, any studies or statistics or documented reportings in our specific city or, you know, nationwide or what have you, about safety or circulation issues caused by human mascots?
No, there, we don't have any documented evidence of, I mean, documentation regarding the statistics or other research that's been done and associated with that. This is a common issue in other cities. Multiple cities have this type of ordinance on their books, and so this is not something that is on the far reaches of adopting within our zoning code.
Oh, go ahead, Brent.
Question maybe for Mel. There are a lot of issues in law. I know we have a law on the, on the books, you can't, like, union pickets close to homes in this town within two hundred feet, but is there, is this thing kind of clear within that context if some bargaining unit comes to town and wants to have their, you know, you know, exercise their right to parade up and down the thing with a sign on or something like that? Are we clear on this ordinance, that we, are we stepping on that area, or do we need to really go slow here on, with this regard here with this particular ordinance?
Are there free speech issues related to this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the, the legal issues that could be affected by this, by this ordinance are all free speech issues. They're all constitutional issues. The change that's being proposed tonight deals with commercial speech. The speech used as an example is, is not commercial speech. That would not be prohibited by this, so your, your classic examples of picketing, political speech with placards or signs would not be affected by this. This would only affect, for example, sign twirlers and other human and, and similar signs that are hired by or used to attract attention to businesses. So, if a union came, nonprofits came, they'd be permitted to still use the sidewalks for their, their free speech rights.
So, would a political, if somebody was dressed as Uncle Sam and they were carrying, you know, a sign for a candidate or an issue, would that be permitted?
That is, that is correct. They could be dressed as Uncle Sam, as a gorilla, as a shark, NATO, whatever you want to be, as Jim Petchus.
Ooh, who would choose that as a mascot?
As long as, as long as the speech is, is non-commercial, it would not qualify as a commercial mascot sign.
Okay, thank you. And Brent, I had a question. In your definition, you've added to, sign means any card, cloth, paper, metal, painted wooden or other medium affixed or applied. So, would it also apply to the handheld signs such as the twirlers that Mel just mentioned?
Correct, yes.
So, applied counts as held. Is that, is that correct? That would be interpreted as?
That's, that's, that's correct. And in fact, if you look at the definition of commercial mascot sign, the last sentence says it includes sign twirlers, sign clowns, and similar devices. So, if it's held by an individual, by a human, by an animal, that would be applied.
Okay, so they, so those two definitions are in agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. That's just, that was my concern. Michael?
Yeah, Mel, I'm wondering, can, can we discuss the ramifications of enforcement or repercussions of fines or what have you for doing this? Do we have any idea about that?
Is the question what enforcement mechanisms a city has against those who violate the ordinance? It's probably a question better posed to Brent, since he's a code enforcement supervisor.
We, what we have is the administrative citation process is the process that we use here in the city. Essentially, violators are notified through a correction notice, and if they fail to comply, they can be issued citations for a hundred dollars for the first violations, two hundred for the second, and up to five hundred for the third and thereafter.
Okay, so, I've been thinking about this a lot, and it seems to me that the definitions that we have here for.
Michael, is this a question that you have for Brent?
Yeah, no, it's a question.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Would this also apply to folks that beg on the corner of streets by freeways that have a sign that say, "Give me some money," and they're human and they have a sign, and they're asking for commerce?
I defer to the city attorney on that one.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, no, this would not apply there. There, there is a constitutional right that they have to be there and to, and to panhandle, if you will, and this, this ordinance would not affect them. It could not affect them.
Wayne?
Yeah, don't we already have a regulation with regard to sign twirlers already?
I believe that under the sign matrix, they're, they are already prohibited.
Yeah, yeah, this covers a mascot without a sign, and them dressed as such would be, would be defined as a sign. But the question I have, Mel, is could you describe other cities and list other cities that have similar ordinances?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the, I am, I am most aware of Lake Forest since I drafted that ordinance about four or five years ago. It's been highly effective. I know Elise Oviedo has an ordinance like this. I'm about ninety-nine percent certain that Irvine has a similar ordinance. Most, most South Orange County jurisdictions have an ordinance like this. If you don't see human signs, sign twirlers, mascots on the street in the city, you can, you can rest assured that they don't, they do have an ordinance like this on the books. But I can guarantee Lake Forest, Elise Oviedo, and almost certainly Irvine do as well.
All right, thank you.
I know outside of Costco, there's somebody right there on the corner with that jewelry store, with that gorilla. The gorilla's there.
It changes every day. But how, who judges, and how do they figure out if it's a mascot or just somebody? if it's a mascot or just somebody who's dressed a little wacky? I mean, if there's no sign on them?
If you look at the definition, it says if the, one of the quantifiers, I believe, is attracts attention of motorists or pedestrians traveling. Let's see.
It's basically if they're holding a commercial message. You could be dressed as Jim Petchus, and, and that would be fine. I mean, that, I'm sorry, that that would also be prohibited?
Correct.
So it's, you don't have to, you don't, you don't have to have an outlandish costume?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're not saying somebody dressed in a bad hairdo walking in front of a barber shop without a sign, and even if they're employed by that person, not directing traffic, are they in violation of this ordinance?
No, they would not, because they wouldn't be really directing anybody to that barb, if they were directing people to the barber shop to get haircuts, yes.
So really what we're saying is people shouldn't be on the street directing people into a business, whether or not they're dressed in a costume. I mean, wouldn't that ordinance do the same thing? I, I just don't like, well, this is a discussion.
But did you want him to clarify that?
I'll let him do it. Discussion.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Brent at this time? Jim?
Yeah, it's another question for our city attorney. What do you, can you give us any information about challenges that have been made to the laws that other cities in South Orange County have been made and the success or failure of those?
Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners, I am not aware of any successful challenges to any of the human sign ordinances in South Orange County. There's, there's been extensive research done previously on these, on these, these types of ordinances, and they've been adopted because of pretty high confidence of their constitutionality. But there are, again, there have been no challenges that have been successful here in South Orange County.
Brent, I was on Del Mar a few weeks ago when there was somebody going up and down the street. I was on, there are two different occasions. On one occasion, somebody was dressed as a banana and was handing out samples, not of bananas, but some kind of fruit something. And that seems to me that that would fit this definition. On another occasion, it was somebody not dressed in a costume, but they were also handing out samples that were from a restaurant or a, you know, food service facility on, on the street. Would that be prohibited?
Yes, it would be, because if you look at the definition of what a sign is, it's intended to be used to attract attention to the subject matter for advertising directional or informational purposes. So those people are associated with some sort of business, and they're directing people, so that makes them a sign by our definition.
Okay, so no matter how they're dressed?
Correct.
All right, any more questions of Brent? Or should we open the public hearing? Okay, all right. Let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Okay, please come forward. If you'll provide your card to the recorded secretary.
Good evening.
And I'm sorry, you, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Connie Lacossi, and I live in Laguna Beach.
Okay.
And I think for the sake of efficiency, it would be easiest for me just to read my comments.
Okay.
As I said, my name is Connie Lacossi. I am the Orange County Area Developer for Liberty Tax and the person who sold the San Clemente Liberty Tax Office to the present owners. I remember how excited they were to open their office in San Clemente. It is a city which they love and want to be a valuable asset to the residents of San Clemente. Let me tell you a little bit about the three owners. They are all professional women. One was a high school vice principal. One is a business owner and a real estate appraiser. And one is an officer in a research company that works on finding a cure for children with cancer. They are three of the most dedicated, hardworking people that I have ever had the pleasure of dealing with in all my years of business. Since opening their office in San Clemente, they have been active in the Chamber of Commerce, attending just about every ribbon-cutting ceremony. In addition, they have attended numerous mixers, luncheons, fundraisers, and charity events in San Clemente. They support the town in every way possible. I would think that they are just the kind of business owners you would want to have in your community. I would think that you would want to encourage and facilitate business owners of this caliber. All of which brings me to the reason I'm writing this letter. One of the big reasons for the success of Liberty Tax throughout the country is our uniform marketers. We are a very patriotic company, and the uniform liberties people wear represents that patriotism. We know that our franchises don't have the kind of money to advertise on television the way some of our competitors do. We know that 85% of our customers come to us because they saw the Statue of Liberty in front of the store. This is especially true in the West Coast since we are just moving into this area, and many people in California have not heard of Liberty Tax. Matter of fact, when I ask people if they've heard of Liberty Tax, they say, "No." I say, "We're the company that has the Statue of Liberty waving." They say, "Oh, I know, I know you." To take the Statue of Liberty marketing uniform away from our owners would be very detrimental to their business. In addition, these marketing positions allow us to employ people that might not otherwise be able to find employment. I have letter after letter of examples who are people who, who could not find employment because of whatever reason and, and are so thankful for Liberty to give, giving them a chance to do something that they could contribute. Additionally, the San Clemente Liberty Tax Office is very hard to see from the street. There is an awning that the city put up that covers a good part of the window. The city will not allow any writing on that, on that awning or a banner on that awning. There is a tree, a light post, and a city garbage receptacle right in front of the window.
Connie, if you could, if you could wrap it up?
I will.
Please, thank you.
So I'm, so, and the city will only allow 25% of the window to be used for advertising. So I'm asking you to reconsider the proposed ordinance and work with this Liberty Tax Office to find a solution that's acceptable to all. Please give these owners a voice in the action that would be so detrimental to their business. It's only for three months a year. I'm sure that with city leaders like yourself and business owners who really care about the community as these women do, that we can find a suitable answer so everyone's happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, so next, Tammy Dunn? Or you can go, do you want to go a different order? Just, just state your name for the record, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you very much.
My name is Brenda Yekki. I'm one of the owners of the Liberty Tax Service located at 439 El Cabino Real. I should state that as my residence, because I'm there most of the time. I want to speak to, one of the things said was, had to do, first of all, I'd like to say it does concern me that a human being would ever be classified as a sign who is not holding anything. However, I want to speak to the concerns about traffic impediment or pedestrian impediment, because I believe that was mentioned in one of the reasons, okay? Having been there seven days a week for the last four months, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, I've watched a lot of traffic outside our front window. My observation is the marketers that we have out front do not do anything to cause an impediment to traffic or to pedestrians going by. I see the traffic flow that happens when we have them out there. Sometimes they call in sick, and we don't have them out there, and the traffic is the same. We have trained them not to do things that would cause a problem. There was a phone call one time last year, to our understanding, that someone was concerned that one of our marketers was doing something. And a sheriff's department was called out, and they observed him for 15 or 20 minutes and came in and told us that we were doing a good job and that we were not causing any problems. The current ordinances you have about signs do prohibit us from holding signs. We have complied with that after a few bumps in the road the first year, but we've had no calls of concerns or problems this year. So if this is an ordinance to be put in place to prevent us or anyone who does what we do causing problems, I believe there's two years of evidence where it hasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Good evening, my name is Vicki Wilson. I'm also one of the co-owners of the Liberty Tax Office on 439 North El Cabino Real. I reside in Laguna Beach, although, as Brenda said, I pretty much state the tax office as my location. The part I wanted to speak to about our costume marketers is the jobs that it creates in the city of San Clemente. In the last two years that we have been in business here, we have employed over 50 people in the roles of both tax preparers and marketing personnel. We are open year-round, and many of those jobs do not end when the tax season ends. We're expanding our services this year so that we can offer more job opportunities for folks in the San Clemente community. Our greeter program is very unique to any business, I would say, and certainly to the, to the tax business. Elimination of that program does eliminate jobs in the city. The opportunity that it offers, that we can offer to folks is that it gives people a hand up, norm, to some particular folks that maybe could not find a job elsewhere. This year, we employed two folks that are in rehabilitation programs. And this is the first opportunity for them to do something to earn some money to help, you know, pay for their own care and take on some responsibility. We've employed another young man this year who has a very toxic home life. This job for him was earning extra money so he could help his mother move into another apartment to get away from their horrible situation where they're at. We also employed a high school student who has dreams of becoming a CSI, and this is a way for her to earn extra money to further her education. So, oh, and the last but not least is our Mr. Chad. He, Chad has a mental disability. He's worked for us for two years. He's our most energetic and enthusiastic young man. And this offers him a job that he can put himself out there without being ridiculed or feeling different, believe it or not. He's, calls it his dream job, because he can stand outside and listen to his music and dance and make people happy. And so I would just ask you to consider the jobs aspect of this proposal, because these are jobs that people need, and it's important to many people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So by default, you must be Tammy Dunn.
I'm Tammy. Hi there. Thank you very much. And I'm Tammy. I reside in Laguna Niguel and ask with the ladies in San Clemente as often as possible. And I had a lot of things written down, but I, I've decided to change a little bit to address some of the topics that were addressed tonight. We have an economic impact, no doubt. Last year, the refunds that we helped to facilitate in this community totaled $1.3 million out of our office into the community. We brought $20,000 worth of cash to the pockets of our people, our clients. We're proud of that. We're proud of putting money into the hands of the people in the city. And we don't do that just because we have open doors. I'm not sure what you define as effective by the bands of other cities, but for me, to be an effective business owner, I have to have people come into my door. And I love the movie Field of Dreams, but if you build it, they will come, they don't. We have to be out there getting them to come in. And it's, we turn the lights on, and, and we have to get them to come in. It is not simply build it. So our greeters, our, our people out there, we, we're very respectful. We care about them. I'm glad to hear other people on Del Mar do the same thing. Being out there with samples, you have to love your business. I love my business, and I love my customers. And we get out there and we show them that. Come into our office. It is not simply turn the lights on, they come in. This day and age, you have to fight for every customer you have every way you can. We have numerous, numerous, numerous cases across the country where free speech has won every challenge of this type. We don't want to go there. We love what we do. We love this city. But there are cases across the country where franchise owners have gone up against this type of ordinance and have won over and over and over again, because free speech is free speech. We are a lady or a man in a costume that's walking around and waving. There is no sign, there is a flag. That's all it is. We're not trying to hurt, intimidate, but show the passion we have for our business, and we're simply trying to get customers to come in our front door. That's all we're doing. I, I just was shocked by the word I heard that in Lake Forest and other cities, the new code is effective. If it's effective for stopping customers to come in the door, then congratulations, but we love our customers and the money we've put into the community, and we want to keep doing that. So I'm just pleading with you to please let us keep doing what we're doing. If 85% of our new business is from that, if we have to stop that, I'm afraid of what might have to happen to our business if this passes. So if you're concerned, please come see us, come talk to us. If there's a chance for us to, if proliferation happens in the future, bring this up again. But you don't have to be like everybody else, every other city. San Clemente is unique, it's special. Keep it that way. You don't have to be like everybody else. It's good, what you have now works, and I applaud you for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tammy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. And before discussion, I just have a question for our city attorney. So one of the speakers raised the issue of the First Amendment, and I know you already spoke to that, but could you expand on your earlier remarks?
Madam Chair, I had a lot of remarks earlier, so, so which, which specific remark should I expand on?
Well, the speaker suggested that this was not something that was defensible for the city. So is it something that, that you feel if the city enacted this ordinance that we would be able to defend it?
Well, it's a, it's a good question. I would be somewhat of a fool to ever try to prognosticate what a court would do with a constitutional claim. Every judge is, is different, every jury is different, and sometimes it can be somewhat arbitrary what happens in court. However, if past is precedent, both in the county and elsewhere, we feel that this ordinance is defensible. It is similar to, to ordinances throughout the county. I actually did some quick, quick research. We've got, this ordinance is, it's very similar to ordinances in Huntington, Mission Viejo, Newport Beach, Laguna Niguel, RSM, San Juan, Dana Point, and Lake Forest, none of which have been challenged over the past many, many years. So, yeah, we feel confident that constitutionally, because it's narrowly focused, because it deals with commercial speech, it's not content-based, it's content-neutral. It should be a defensible ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you. Wayne?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask Brent a couple of questions. Brent, what type of signage do they have? One of the speakers mentioned that they're not allowed to put a, a sign on the awning. Do they have a sign on the front of the, of the building?
I believe they, they do have a sign on the front of the building.
Okay. On the window?
It's all around.
Okay, so, but they also have a sign on the side, above the garage, is that correct?
I can't recall specifically.
Well, I saw a sign there. I'm just confirming with you that...
Yeah, I couldn't tell you yes or no. I don't recall seeing it.
Okay, so, so they do have advertising on, on the windows. Are they allowed to have a sign on, on the facade of the building?
That would be up to the planning department to make that determination. It's based upon square footage and frontage in their architectural overlays on.
Maybe Jim can answer that.
Well, okay, they're in architectural overlay, so their signage requirements, I believe, maximum is one and a half times their actual frontage.
Uh huh.
They're also dictated, there was some mention about the window area, and more, no more than 25% of the window area in, anywhere in the city is allowed to be used for signage, and that does not count over, against your overall signage. I believe the maximum, of course, this is still, he would know better than me. I think the maximum for any one sign is 24 square feet in the, the overlay. So there's certain limitations. Certainly, they could have a sign on their awning. Certainly, they could have a wall sign. Certainly, they could have a, some type of a blade sign as options for their signage. But they're also located within a building with multiple tenants, and typically, a building with more than four signs is required to have a master sign program. So what the, the owners may be speaking of is limitations by their master sign program on what they can do and what they can't do. I don't know the particular details. So they, they probably have some limitations in regard to that. There are always options of re, you know, reevaluating and redoing the master sign program to provide them some more opportunity to advertise with their signage. But we'd have to look into it more deeply But we'd have to look into it more deeply to kind of understand their particular instance and their limitations and see if there's any options for them.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, Brent. So commissioners, are there, would you like to exchange some thoughts on this issue?
I just, questions, maybe it's appropriate for the... How many Liberty franchises are there in Orange County? Can you give me, are we the only one that has one, or?
No, 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 no.
There's 44 territories in Orange County, 26 of which are presently open, and 20 of which are...
26 are open mean that there are stores that are existing, 26 stores?
In Orange County.
And are there stores in some of the jurisdictions that prohibit the characters, the mascots? So you do have stores that operate in those communities?
And in most of those areas, we're trying to work out something with the city so that we can come to some kind of a compromise on this. I have...
Is the public meeting open, or?
It is, but I had a question of the applicant.
Okay, all right.
I think you answered my question. I appreciate it. Thank you. Michael?
That's a question, I guess, for, well, with these other cities that have enacted this zoning ordinance, do you know whether or not that was really something that came through the planning commission?
Madam Chair and commissioners, I can't speak for each city. I can speak for Lake Forest again because I drafted it. But if the sign, if the human mascot sign ordinance is part of the zoning ordinance, which nearly every sign ordinance is in the zoning ordinance, then it has to go to the planning commission first. So I would bet that every one of these cities went to planning commission first and then council, because state law requires that the planning commission review every ordinance that is going to amend the zoning ordinance. And sign ordinances are almost always embedded within the zoning ordinance.
All right, Chair. Oh, Bonnie, I'm sorry. Your water is blocked.
I wanted to ask if our attorney had any input into the wording of the two definition changes that is proposed.
Is the question, do I have input now, or did I have input?
Did you have any input into the wording of this?
Yes, I certainly did. Our office reviewed the wording, made some changes to ensure that we were within the bounds of the law, and we're comfortable with the wording.
And does the law state that a person or an animal is an object?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner Barnes.
Well, the definition of sign is saying that it's any card, cloth, paper, metal, et cetera, affixed to different types of structures, such as a ground, tree, wall, fence, building, a structure, person, animal, or similar object. And I have a real problem seeing a person and an animal as an object of any type.
Okay, I understand the question. Because the disjunctive is used there, the term "object" is used as a noun to encompass all the examples previously used. If there's a better word to use, I assume we could. I know people and animals probably shouldn't be seen in our interpersonal reactions or relations as objects, but here, legally speaking, I think the word actually works because we are dealing with a subset of about five or six different issues, right? Ground, tree, wall, fence, building, structure, et cetera, et cetera. So the object is simply to encompass all of those, all those previously articulated nouns in the clause.
I'm sorry, I have a real problem with that. And I just don't see a person as a tree, or an animal as a fence.
Well, we could use the word "thing," or, I mean, I don't think the word "object" there really is that operative in terms of the legal effect of the ordinance. I'm certainly open to other terms that could be used there besides "object." But the idea is that the final noun there is meant to encompass all the previous.
I defer to the commissioners.
Did you have a suggestion, Bonnie?
I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, so there isn't an alternative that you're considering?
Not in this context, no.
Okay. All right. Bart?
Yeah, at the League of California Cities, I went to a sign seminar, and it kind of addressed the same issue. And one of the things that kind of piqued my attention tonight was the fact that they said those were marketers out front. And I understand protecting our sidewalks, protecting traffic, making it safe and whatnot, sign twirlers, carrying signs, things like that, I understand completely discouraging if we can. I think I'm struggling with the fact of saying that a person walking in a costume is content-neutral is one of the things that they quoted, that we can't dictate what's in a sign. And so how far do we stretch this? Can somebody be walking in board shorts and a T-shirt and thongs in front of a surfboard shop? Is that bad? I do find, and this is a personal comment, and it doesn't really pertain, but what we're seeing here, I think, is a little annoying even to me and everybody, and it's a little cheesy as far as that goes, and it actually would divert me from using the business. I would want to, if I was going to trust my taxes to somebody, it would be someone who is maybe a little more established and traditional. But I've been struggling with saying the appearance of the person can be governed. And the attorney here has said that, yeah, we can probably do that. Is somebody walking their dog in front of a pet store a sign? Can we dictate that? We can't even currently enforce our sign ordinances with the business right next to them. There's the PC repair business that has every single window of theirs filled with signage, far more than 25%. And we're expecting that we're going to enforce this on them when we can't even enforce the ordinances that we currently have. And that's bad on us, that we're not doing it. So I'm all for supporting ordinances that would dictate sign twirlers, obstructing traffic, being an annoyance to pedestrians and all. But I'm, this mascot thing, I just don't know how it's evaluated, and I'm uncomfortable, and maybe it just goes against my core values. It's just, but the mascot part of it bothers me. The rest of it is totally understandable.
Jim? I think you were next.
Yeah, let me preface with a couple of things. I just think because we, you know, we have one business here who's speaking, you know, this is an ordinance that covers the city. It's not, you know, we're not targeting this one business. I just think it's good to point that out, you know, we're sort of referring to your business because you're here tonight. I also think it sounds like you're just the kind of business people we want in the city, people who are engaged and, you know, connected and associated and want to do the right thing, and, you know, that's all, you know, great and wonderful. You know, having said that, there's, I think that one of the issues we're looking at here is community standards. You know, we have community standards in terms of how big should our sign be? You know, how did we talk a lot in design review about how they should look? And, you know, we ask, you know, large corporations to maybe, you know, not include their logo or to change their color scheme or something like that to fit into what we're doing here in the community. And I think that this ordinance, one thing this ordinance does is reflect a community standard that we might have, just kind of what you were saying, you sort of discomfort with, you know, seeing that in the middle, and, you know, seeing a mascot in the middle of the community doesn't really necessarily reflect what the community might not want to see. So I think that's something we want to have our, you know, want to have our finger on a little bit. One of my big concerns when I was looking at this was, I think, like a lot of people, what about free speech? I think that's pretty much been answered. I wouldn't want, first, to suppress someone's free speech, and, second, to have the city taking a court on it. But this is focused really at marketing, and we do that, you know, that's what signage is, right? It's marketing. Any, you know, a sign or a window sign, that's marketing. You know, that's what this is. I think we haven't seen any evidence of traffic issues or safety issues. I think I look at that and I worry about it, but no evidence has been, you know, presented to us, so I'm not sure we can kind of, you know, take that into account. But, you know, some of these other reasons, I think, are fairly compelling, including, you know, fairness to other businesses. If you, if we started to get other businesses doing, either, businesses either aren't going to do this, which means that one business kind of has an advantage in terms of their signage or their marketing, then, you know, that business has an advantage. Then other businesses may start to do this, and then we've got whole streets full of mascots, and that's probably, again, not something our community is going to want, and then it's an existing problem we have to deal with as opposed to perhaps a problem we have to have to turn away from or stop. So those are all concerns of mine in that kind of community standard way of looking at it. Just to address your statement about the word "object," personally, I don't have a problem with it. I think an object is, it's anything, right? At least in my business, we use that word a lot, you know, to refer to things, and it's, you know, I'm an object, you know, because I'm in the physical world, a glass of water is an object because it's in the physical world. It's not the verb "to objectify," which means, I think, something different. But just to say legally, an object like a thing that exists in the world, I don't have a problem with that from the wording point of view. I don't think it diminishes, you know, anyone's humanity. But to summarize, as I see it now, I want to hear what the other commissioners have to say, but it seems to me this is not an unreasonable thing to do to support a certain community standard. And so I, you know, given what we've heard about the defensibility of it and how it affects free speech, I think, you know, until I hear more from the commissioners, at the moment, I'm leaning towards being in favor of it.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Jim. Wayne?
I'm going to be also in support of this resolution. And let me share with you why. Last night, the city council set pretty high standards for signage, if you watched the council meeting, to say the least, with regard to freeway signage, with regard to signage for street sweeping. They set a very high standard last night. I think community standards are paramount, very paramount in San Clemente, and they talked about community standards last night a great deal. I'd like the city to work with them with regard to more signage on their facade, on their awning. They did have a sign on the side of the building above the garage. And also, I know that a number of people have called with regard to the business on the corner there with more than 25% signage on their windows, and I don't know why, nothing has been done about that, but something should be done, but something about that. But to me, the overriding issue here, the overriding issue to me above, in addition to the community standards, is the health and safety of this community. That particular, and we're not doing this specifically for Liberty Tax, but throughout the community, but that particular intersection is the most heavily, one of the most heavily traveled intersections downtown, not only for traffic, but also for pedestrian traffic. And I think it's important for us to be proactive instead of reactive when it comes to the health and safety of this community. I'd hate to see someone get injured or mauled or result in a death with a traffic accident there or with a pedestrian in that particular area. So overriding all issues with regard to wording, whether it's an object or whether it's a person as a mascot or of that nature, the overriding issue to me is the health and safety of this community, and that's number one, by the way, in our mission statement. So with, as Jim is, I'm going to be in favor of this particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody else? Don?
Yeah, let me throw a few things out here. I too noticed the sign imbalance, I guess, of the building there. I don't know what the owner has versus this particular, the other established businesses, and then again, the corner computer repair business that's completely plastered over, and Brent, maybe I might take a visit there in the next day or so. And I, but I'm conflicted in a way with Bart, in a way, you know, the famous, some of the signage thing. It's the message, not the media and all the delivery, you know, free speech issues that we need to really be aware of. And I was, and I also can, definitely was at council last night for an issue that was signage, and we've all faced the signage issues with the whole shopping center here recently. But I was wondering the concept of, how about regulating this rather than prohibit? I wonder what the sense of the commission is there. Are we using a hammer to kill a fly here, or do we, can we regulate this and then get a permitting thing where tax season is January through March, and that's when they get it? I throw that concept out to the commission for discussion. I don't know. It's a tough call. These were always tough issues.
So you're suggesting that perhaps it's not something that can be a permanent solution for a business, but they could perhaps get a permit, like we have, you know, special event permits, so something they, for a certain number of days per year?
I mean, like Christmas time, the Salvation Army's out on the sidewalk, ringing a little bell with a little pot and a little red stand and collecting money for their charitable causes, you know? Not particularly in San Clemente, but they're all over the place. But how about a Santa Claus outside the store somewhere in Christmas time? I mean, seasonal thing. I mean, do we need a permit for Santa? I don't know.
But Bart?
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in real quick one more time and say that I totally agree with Wayne's concern about health, safety, and welfare. As far as city standards, we can't always get exactly what we want because there are rights that people have. And I was thinking, just on a sideline, one of the greatest things I ever enjoyed in downtown Laguna Beach is what? The Laguna Beach greeter, who was there for 40 years in front of the Pottery Barn. He became an icon to the city, and it was wonderful. And it's just the fact that we've got something here that's not to that caliber, and we're doing a knee-jerk reaction, and I like the idea of somehow controlling it, but I'm just uncomfortable with going the whole way of saying the appearance of somebody doing a job is, trumps that feeling of discomfort seeing them.
You know, oh, Michael, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Well, I think, I feel like I'm in a very awkward position here because if I don't support the initiative to ban this, am I actually welcoming other merchants throughout the city to have light people all over the street doing this? And my head says, no, I wouldn't want to see that. But I'm also thinking about the reality of what we've got here. We've got, I think everybody knows about the Statue of Liberty on that corner, very, very prominent. It's not the kind of sign that I think is appropriate for the city, but I think what I'm really feeling is that we're trumping this up to a safety issue that I'm not sure even exists, and it's certainly not become an epidemic in the city where we see this all over the place. So I guess I'm feeling like, you know, this really isn't that much of a problem, and why should we react so harshly to one particular business?
Yeah, I think, I think you've all made some excellent points. I think where I am is my concern is with the cumulative effect. You know, if this becomes a good idea and we have every business doing it, it is something, I think, that degrades our community standards. So, you know, I definitely have a concern in that regard. But I also see Bart's point and the possible solution that Don has suggested, which is, much as we do with something like, say, special events, that we allow businesses in a limited way to utilize this means of marketing for special occasions during the year. You know, it seems to me that there might be something reasonable that we could do that would be along that line, that would allow businesses who are having special seasonal, you know, promotions, you know, who knows what the appropriate number is, you know, 10 times to have someone out on the street to draw attention to that promotion, or... 10 times to have someone out on the street to draw attention to that promotion, or, as you say, Don, during the holidays, you know, perhaps businesses want to draw, you know, people in. But I think it's something we do have to draw some kind of line about because I think it is something that if all the businesses up and down El Camino begin doing that, or even, you know, a handful of them are doing it at the same time, I think it does give you the appearance of a community with a different set of standards than we have. So, you know, I definitely feel that we need some level of control of this kind of activity. And don't get me wrong, I'm in marketing. I totally understand, you know, that, especially when you're a smaller business, that you have to, you know, come up with, you know, a clever marketing plan in order to compete against the, you know, some of your larger competitors. And for full disclosure, I have worked for H&R Block, but it's been more than a decade, so I don't have a relationship with them as a client of ours. But I don't think, I don't think that for any business, this could be really their primary marketing plan. I think that it has too great an impact on the community. So, and Bonnie, on your issue, if, you know, I'm open to other terms, if you have a term to suggest, but I don't have, it doesn't bother me personally, so if there's another term, you know, I'm willing to look at that, but...
I'd be open to staff willing to rewrite.
Well, I think it's hard for them to do when they don't have the, they don't have the objection, but, so I'm wondering if we want to see if there's support for some sort of limited use of commercial mascots, and if so, if we would want staff to explore that, or if there's not support for that, if that's in the minority and...
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'm not going to be in support of a permit for something of that nature. I just think it's going to be proliferation throughout the city, and I think we have high community standards here. I, for one, am not going to wait for someone to get injured or on that corner, or on any corner. I just don't feel that it's appropriate at all, and I'd hope that we're not going to be concerned about one word here. I think that's important, but we should be concerned about the concept here. So I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot at this and...
Wayne, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I actually did have one more comment. Were you about to make the motion?
Yes.
If you don't mind, can I interject something?
Yeah.
Just pertinent to what you said and to, you know, just as a quick response to what I heard other, some other people say. One thing to kind of imagine, if we've got a human mascot, a corporate mascot out there, what if we replace that with an actual physical sign? Would we like that, sitting in the public right-of-way in the sidewalk?
No.
The answer, I suspect, is probably no.
No.
The net effect, though, is the same for a mascot or a physical sign. The other observation to make is this notion of...
Jim, however, we do allow those signs on a permitted basis.
Not on the public right-of-way.
In the public right-of-way?
Not on the public right-of-way.
We do allow the sandwich signs, Jim. Don't we allow those with a permit?
I don't think it's within their own property.
Within their own property, but not in the public right-of-way.
Brent, clear it up. Portable signs are allowed through a permitting process, but they are not allowed on the public right-of-way at all.
Okay.
They have to be on the business. Actually, it has to be relatively close to the front door of the business.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, and the other observation is with the seasonal issue is, I fear with that we're going to have, you know, in tax season, we would have one mascot, and then in the summertime, we'll have surfing store mascots, and then as we get towards Halloween, we'll have a Halloween store mascot, Christmas mascots. So the net effect is that all year long, we would still have mascots. I don't know how effectively restricting it to a seasonal thing might address the issue, because we'll still have them, so that's it.
Michael?
You know, I'm bouncing around like a ping-pong ball on this because, you know, my heart feels like, you know, we're making a big deal on this. But, you know, the job that we have here is unfortunate that we have to look at this as a form of signage. And if I'm going to take that tact and say, do I feel like this is the appropriate kind of signage that this community wants, I'm going to have to say, I don't think so. And I'm also going to have to say that if we don't do that, we are, in fact, asking for more of it in the future, which I think would not be a good idea as well. So it's unfortunate that a small occurrence has gotten us to this point, but I think it does make us have to take a stance one way or the other, and I'm really feeling like, you know, we need to, we need to address this with a provision in the signage.
I'll go. Well, it looks like there's two issues now, the one of safety and the one of signage and size and things, whether people are signs. The most important thing is safety. We haven't been given any findings how this has disturbed safety or caused accidents on this particular item, and I would really like to see more of that from staff to go on. And I do have a problem with the wording still, and no one has come up with an alternative to the wording. In the definition number two, if you could differentiate between people and objects, that would be much appreciated. You could even change the wording. Sign means any card, cloth, paper, metal, painted, wooden, or other medium affixed or applied on or to the ground, tree, wall, fence, building, structure, similar object, a person, or animal. That puts a separation between your inanimate objects and your living ones. I would be okay with a change, something of this nature. But I haven't had any statistics here from the staff enforcement about any accidents that have occurred or almost occurred, or calls in, police reports, or anything of this nature. I would like to have a little more proof of this and a little more substance for, to go on, something more from the enforcement, other than this is a want, this is an ask. So I think to be fair to also the individuals that have come today, they came with the understanding that they could advertise in this way, is my understanding, and they were allowed, they were given a permit to do business, yes? Is that correct?
They were given a business permit.
They have a business permit, I'm sure.
I don't think we have any information about whether...
Isn't it an understanding that this is how their business operates? I mean, we knew this when we gave this permit, did we not?
I don't think...
No.
No.
No, we did not.
However, it was permitted.
But it was permitted.
His business...
So we have a conflict here.
It was not prohibited when they established their business.
And what could be done to be fair? What mitigation do you offer them? Could they take the awning off and have something there for them?
Well, I think, I think Don is...
I don't think, I think the awning belongs to the owner or there's a city...
The city awning is what, how it was...
It's not a city awning. It's an awning that belongs to the owner of the building or to the tenant that can be taken down. And I think it's important that city staff work with the building owner and/or the Liberty Tax to increase their signage. I think that would be very important to do, but that's, you know, so...
Could we do some of that first and then revisit this again after they've had a chance to have a mitigation for losing their advertising ability?
Well, I think that, I think that we can certainly pass a resolution here and, within that resolution, ask staff to work with the owner and/or the tenant for increased signage in that location. What I'd like to do is, I think we need to move along here as we can, and I'd like to move with a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council adopt zoning amendment 15-086 for the purposes of prohibiting commercial mascot signs with a provision that the city work diligently with the owner of the building and with the tenant to increase their signage capabilities on the building.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So it passes?
It's five-two.
Five-two and passes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us back to, I like the sound of music, that brings us back to, do, oh, that brings us back to the zoning discussion, and I believe we're ready for section two? Is that, is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
So if we're moving to section two, that means it is appropriate that I recuse myself for both this section and for section three? Is that where we are? Because you're looking at me with...
Yes.
Okay. For section two and for section three, because I own property within 500 feet of the zones that are affected by this discussion. So hand the gavel over to Commissioner Brown.
I made a mistake, like you mentioned here. I caught it. Go with me.
Okay, let's commence with, I think we're part two of General Plan 15-049. Adopt changes to the, um, General Plan Amendment Development Criteria, mixed-use 3.1 development standards. Is that right?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, Chris Wright, project planner. So this part of the project involves a couple items. I could go back to the map for the first one. So this number 27 involves changes to the mixed-use 3.1 area, and what staff was directed to do by the city council was to make changes that would allow standalone residential uses in the mixed-use 3.1 area. So some text changes have been drafted and proposed for your consideration in the land use table of the general plan. We can go to that page if you like, if you want to see what those are. Should we do that?
Where is it?
Okay. So that would be on page 13 of Attachment Four, Exhibit B.
Attachment one.
What's that, one more time? Page 14 of Attachment Four, Exhibit B. Attachment Four, for simplicity here, is the draft resolution.
Okay, that's a help.
And then there's exhibits to that resolution. Does that help?
There's so much mess.
Okay. Just to get a number of attachments.
Exhibit B.
Exhibit B.
Which is the, actually, the general plan, right?
Yes. Text changes to the general plan. So we're, it looks like this. It looks like this. It's a table with red lines in it.
Yeah, there's so many tables.
So, yeah, exactly. Believe it or not, there's only one of those, but...
Well, here's general plan.
In this particular... So let's go to, first, let's go to Attachment Four. Let's start there. Mine and Attachment Four. Looks like this.
Yeah, that would be...
It's in the upper right-hand corner, like normal. I'm following protocol.
What I'm just saying, the attachments are so long. Because Attachment Two...
Attachment Two is the, Attachment, let me go with you here. So Attachment Two is the Planning Commission memorandum for the study session on March 18th. Attachment Three are the minutes from that study session.
Oh, I found Attachment Five.
And then Attachment Four is the resolution, the draft resolution.
So I'll go.
Let me know when you get to that point, and then I'll keep going.
Can you come over here?
Oh.
Wait, okay. I found Five. Here's Five. Here's Five. We're going to have to have you put little markers in where the attachments are or something.
Next time, I'll...
Put a little, Exhibit B.
Then page four to you. Everybody else can copy you.
Okay.
Here it is, right here. You got it.
Wait, and where did the resolution go?
Oh, that was earlier. This is Exhibit B.
Okay. Thank you. I know where it is.
For members of the public, it's usually not this bad, so...
Yeah. You had it, that's why you didn't know.
Anybody else? I was there. Bart, we've got to go with you.
Who voted against it? Bart?
Julia.
That's interesting.
It's very interesting.
Because she said she wasn't...
Yeah, she was...
Well, I gave him a hard time about the object.
I did, you know. Next time, I'll put Post-Its in there or something.
I don't like the word "object." But thank you. No, I got it right here. Attachment Four, right? That's what it is, so...
Okay, now, now I'm going to find the resolution.
Verbally, but we weren't getting there. There you go, right there.
All right, got it.
You guys.
Got it, right here.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Oh, here's Attachment Four.
Yeah, I know, but just keep going. Right here.
Well, now, I got this one and this one. I left them all marked.
Page 12 and 13.
Yes, this and this.
Yes.
This is it.
L U won.
See, Julia leaves, and it all falls apart.
Page 13.
Everybody's on the right page, let's continue.
So on that page, you're going to note a row for mixed-use 3.1.
Okay.
And there are several changes that you should note of.
Formerly AMU3.
I'll start one. We all set?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a row for mixed-use 3.1. You're going to see some changes here. I'm just going to note out the substantive changes, not the clerical cleanup items, unless you want me to go over everything, but the first column is, it says standalone residential use. So I added that to make it clear that you could have a standalone residential use. And then it notes what the residential density standards are for standalone residential use. Then in the column that says max number of stories, building height, I add residential and to clarify that you could have a residential use standalone. And then in the far-right column, it says, also outside the pedestrian overlay, standalone residential uses are allowed. That's the extent of the general plan amendment for this item.
Just a minute.
There.
Okay, got it. This then is the extent of the entire change for this part of the issue for part two.
Yes, for the general plan.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on this? I'm assuming for this, we should open up the public hearing on this also?
It has a different far.
Pardon me? Any discussion from the commission or straw vote?
Any questions, sir?
Your microphone?
I will try to clarify further. So the City Council, currently, you could have a mixed-use development in this area, and I could show you a map if that helps you too. In this area, you can have either a commercial use or a mixed-use project with commercial on the ground floor and residential on the second floor. The City Council has directed staff to make changes that would allow a residential-only use in that area. So changes are being proposed in this table to clarify what the standards would be if you were only to have a residential project.
And so for the record, also, mixed-use 3.1 is basically from the core to North Beach, down North Oak, Commune, Real, correct?
It's just outside the downtown core.
Mm-hmm.
So it's adjacent to the downtown core, not in North Beach, just... Because, note here, it says outside the pedestrian overlay.
Okay.
So the only area where that applies is just outside the downtown core.
Okay, all areas of the T-zone...
See this 27 area?
Pictures worth a thousand words. Okay.
Just walk me through these requirements real quick. Residential and commercial projects, you're limited to two stories. If there's all residential, all commercial, is that correct?
Yes.
33 feet and 26 feet.
Yes.
Then for mixed-use projects on lots greater than 12,000, it can be three-story. Then for mixed-use projects, two stories, 33 and 26. What's that?
Well, what we could do there, I see your point where you're getting at to make it a little clearer, what we could do is we could take the bottom text there and move it up, because I have it, note, there's an exception at the bottom there. It says "exception with conditional use permit, three stories." Do you see that?
Yeah, I'm just curious where this mixed-use two stories comes into play.
For lots, 12,000 square feet or smaller.
It should say that.
I will add that. Thank you.
Good catch, Bart. Okay?
Okay. Very good.
Any other comments on this particular general plan amendment?
If not, I'll move a straw vote to see if people want to accept number 27 with the changes as described by Bart and recorded by staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go on to zoning amendments 14-456 and adopt a change to the zoning map to rezone MU3 to residential mediums.
And we're going to do exactly the same thing, though, if you remember those purple polygons that were up there, the same polygons, and we're gonna, so we're gonna do rezoning of those same parcels. And then in terms of standalone, we, you'll recall, at our study session, we brought to you the language that standalone residential is a use of a lot where lots joined exclusively for residential and residential ancillary purposes. And in the C-zones, standalone residential is not allowed at all. So if we go back through those tables we were going through earlier, you'll see empty cells on standalone residential in all the C-zones, and I went back and checked, and it's actually that way. And then, and then in the MU-zone, you will see standalone residential designated as permitted within the 3.1. So we use that definition, and in the table, the word standalone residential's there, and it's permitted there. And because we now had that definition, we also needed to permit it within the 5.1 zone as well, because the specific criteria working on that zone does allow individual residential-only development on those parcels down there under certain specific conditions. So it's permitted in both places, and that's what, so that's the sum total of the zoning ordinance changes.
Could you give us the index numbers for no other reason, for accounting purposes?
I can do that. First off, the language having to do with the standalone residential is Section 6A of the resolution and ordinance.
I'm looking for those index numbers from the tables, because that's what we're tracking in order, because we're gonna go through another round of this, I want to make sure that we end up with, we know the index is...
Okay, the map, so the 3.1 is at index table number 22.
Okay, hold on a minute, let me get to where I'm thinking of, and... I'm looking at, I'm down here in page, in Exhibit A of the zoning document.
Okay.
And on this table, like we saw in the general plan document, there's index numbers on the far left that reference maps and such, those index numbers are what show up on the maps.
Yes, so they're different index numbers?
So we've got, in this section, we've got, for this document, we have 7, 8, 16, 22, 24, 25, 26 still to cover.
Yeah.
So I wanted to know what we're covering while Commissioner Brown is here.
Okay. If we're looking at, what page?
On here.
Looking at map 12?
So there's two items for the commission to vote on here. The first one is this MU3.1 item, that is 22 in the table.
Wait a minute, wait, hold it.
So it's currently mixed-use 3, an architectural overlay and coastal overlay.
We're back to the general plan?
This is a zoning.
Hold it.
Well, no, they're looking for the numerical table that accompanies the maps in Exhibit A.
There we go here.
Mike, okay, let me explain here, okay? The general plan changes are more widespread. They include other areas of the city, like Tolega, there's other areas, they aren't just limited to commercial mixed-use zones. The zoning amendment that's being proposed is limited to only commercial mixed-use zones, so the numbers aren't going to be exactly the same.
No, I understand that. My point was, is we have a set of numbers in the general plan document, we have another different set of numbers in the zoning ordinance, and the reason we're tracking those is because we have commissioners who need to recuse, and so we need to cover exactly those numbers and not other numbers. So we did that, just did that with the general plan one. I want to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover and we don't cover what we don't want to cover until Commissioner Brown is recused.
I understand, I just want everyone to know, kind of, because we're...
Let me, can I, let me interject. The number pages in Exhibit, the numbers in Exhibit A are map changes, they're map changes only.
This is a difference.
And so I can point you to the places within the code documents, Exhibits B and C, where those changes are in place.
I understand that those indexes reference map elements. I'm trying to figure out an accounting here to cover what we, like, just what we just did in the general plan, right? We had items 22, 27, and 29 that we had set aside.
I hear you.
And then we covered 27.
Yes.
So we're doing the same thing here of the things that we set aside in Phase 1.
Yes.
I want to make sure, I want to understand what we're covering here in Phase 2.
Okay.
So we cover those, and then obviously save the first Phase 3 of those that should be saved for Phase 3.
Okay, there are two items.
Okay.
First one that we've been talking about so far is the mixed-use 3.1 items and the zoning ordinance, which, so we talked about the general plan, okay? Let's move past the general plan, we, I showed you what those numbers were, and we talked about them. Now we're going to the zoning code, and so there's a different set of maps for the zoning code and a different list. That's what this list is here, and the maps that follow it are all zoning-related. On this table, the two items that the commission will be acting on would be 22 for the mixed-use 3.1 related changes. That's... 7 and 8 as well, they're both mixed-use 3.1.
And so that means we would save 16, 24, 25, and 26 for a discussion after Commissioner Brown recuses. Is that correct? That's what I have. 16, 24, 25, 26. Am I correct in that?
Should be all the 3.2s, right, Jim?
No, 24 is part of this, 24 is also something that you're considering right now.
So 7, 8, 22, and 24 is what we're considering now.
Okay.
7, 8, 22, and 24.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you need me to explain what each one is?
Whatever we did before...
Well, that's where I was having a concern...
Funny is, I did all this to make it clear, but somehow doubting that this is a success.
It's only about 250 pages we're getting through here. The map, so like 7 and 8, my concerns earlier on with, I guess this has been, we thought it was mixed-use before, but it's been actually, they were commercial, so that's why we're really realigning something that has been around for, we're now bringing this in sync with the general plan, is that correct?
Correct, it is only to make things consistent, is that...
So in the general plan, for all of North Beach and these areas and some of the rest of, all along North Oak, Commune, Real, we're trying to bring it into mixed-use where the general plan is and the zoning ordinance is not synchronized. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, 7 and 8, that's all we're doing.
And 22 and 24, is that correct?
20, let's stick with 24 for now. 24 is the mixed-use 3.1 area that we just discussed related to the general plan.
Okay.
So we'd be making the zoning code reflect the changes we just discussed for the general plan.
Okay.
That's 24. Should I go to 22 now?
Let's go to 22.
20, 20, wait. So 22, I'm sorry, 22 is the mixed-use 3.1. 24 is right here and right here. It's a mapping change to make it from mixed-use 3 zoning to RM zoning, to reflect what is in the general plan. So it's only to make the documents consistent, is what we're proposing.
Okay. And then finally, are we clear on 7 and 8 then, or do we need to discuss? Do you want to, we want to straw vote on all four of these then, each individually?
Unless you want to discuss each one separately, I encourage you just to take one vote.
Yeah, okay, then let's go on to 7 and 8, I guess is the next three, or we already discussed everything now?
We did those.
Okay, is everybody in synchronization with 7, 8, 22, and 24?
Right, yes.
If that's the case, then I will move that we take a straw vote to accept items 7, 8, 22, and 24 as written.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass the 6 up. Okay.
Yeah, there's a, in the process of evaluating this, there's a miss. We actually had a property owner here in the audience that won't speak to this right now. But when I was working with the City Council, they wanted us to allow the opportunity for existing residential and residential in mixed-use zones to be able to redevelop to residential. And what happened is, this particular area here, which, if you look here, they're all existing houses, and it happens to be in the boundary of what we call the core area. And so as the core area, we don't allow, we don't allow individual residential, it has to be mixed-use. And I'm pointing this out because I think it's a bad idea, if you were to take one of these houses out right here and put a mixed-use, or a bunch of residential houses with a zero lot line setback and three stories, it just doesn't make sense at all. Or actually, it's two-story here, it's four, so it's a bit over that. But if you do have two stories, it doesn't make sense. So what I would propose is for, actually, I'd like to plan to accomplish the way I'm a few, what it poses, you guys, to give me direction one way or the other, whether you think it would be a good idea to reconsider this particular area and allow some kind of a, I don't know, maybe an overlay, or what we'd have to work out with Chris, you know, how to address it exactly, and allow this particular area of the core to have that opportunity to be residential.
Want some discussion on that?
Other options would be to just switch it all the way to residential, too, because down here, you can't, there's orange areas, like Chris showed you just a little while ago, what we did was we made all this residential when it was part of the mixed-use zone. So this, another option would be just to make this residential...
What is it now?
Right now, it's mixed-use, it's part of the core.
What's physically on the...
They're all houses.
Okay. They're all residential, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, we just, I think we've improved some, improved cultural heritage.
If you can verify this border, I haven't actually gone out and field-checked all this, some of these are parking lots, I think right here is a parking lot. But, so we can look at that. What I propose, there's two options, of the least impactful and easier for me to sell to the Coastal Commission and the LCP, is to keep the mixed-use, but allow residential standalone. Another option would be just to make it all, or keep it all.
Which is mixed-use.
You'd like direction from us to study those two options and propose the best solution.
And the two options?
Yeah, and it just, do you think it's a good idea?
Well, I think it's a good idea, okay.
I think so.
I'll make a motion.
What are the two options, mixed-use plus standalone, I'm sorry?
I have some photos, too. Here's a photo of the area.
Or residential.
Or mixed-use plus standalone.
Yeah, across the street, you have all the medium denser residential.
We're just, but we're just, let me be clear, we're just giving direction to take another look at this in light of these facts, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a, do you need a motion for that?
We take a straw vote to give direction to planning staff to consider the mixed-use designation, or reconsider the mixed-use designation as either mixed-use with a residential element or all residential.
Is it mixed-use plus standalone or residential? Is that the two options I thought?
So, and Council, the reason why I feel comfortable about including this is, Council gave me really clear direction about that, but they didn't want to prevent people that have houses in this mixed-use zone from redevelopment. We have a property owner here that I've personally been working with him for some time on a house that has all these pole advantage policies and easy rebuilds, and that's the...
Okay.
So this would give him...
Would give him the option of doing that.
Right.
Okay, so I think, just to clarify, Bart, the two options that the planner put out, and just make sure we're all synchronized, is either look at all residential or mixed-use plus standalone type designation for that area, for this particular area. That's the straw vote that Commissioner Crandall has made a motion on.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay. Now, what's the next on the menu here? Are we down to part... Are we down to Part Three where I get to recuse?
Don't we, don't we have to do Exhibit C? I have Exhibit C, pages eighteen through twenty, covers MU three point one and three point two. So probably you would want to be there for three point one. This is down on page eighteen on Exhibit C. That's, am I, that's what I have on my, in my notes, if I'm wrong, let me know.
And those are the actual, reflect the, Jim, these, these reflect the changes that basically we just talked about, allowing residential in the residential zone.
So we don't, okay, we covered that in the Phase One, but we don't have to cover that again now.
Well, unless you want to look at the actual specific standards, they're in that section. So if you, it specifically says the density is allowed, the height limits and everything else in there. So if you want to look at those and have comments on those, then give those comments now.
I don't, I don't need comments on them, I don't know if anyone else does.
Everything is to match what's in the land use table of the general plan.
So, we're basically through with Part Two of the scheme tonight. Now, uh,
Yes.
do we still want to let the, uh, the public comment with their card? Do they have a card, or are we, were we pretty clear on this?
I recommend.
We do, I know that, um, Mr. Alvarez wants to speak on this particular issue.
Do we have a card, Eileen? George Alvarez? Let's open the public hearing on this particular issue. Yeah.
Members of the planning commission, as you can see, well, I am not living in the area where this plan has been submitted, but I've been having quite, for a long time, I live in this house since nineteen ninety-one. So I am very familiar with the requirements of what I was allowed back then to do, and what I will be allowed to do now. It's two different things. Um, I would truly ask you to pass or to include this residence into the new standalone residential use because the problem that we have since last year, I have, I have three sets, three different sets of plans for my, my home. The first one was a three-story, we, including the commercial, that it is required today. Then in two thousand fourteen in February, they discontinued that. So no more three stories are allowed on Granada. So now a two-story is still requiring a commercial. I'm dealing with a four thousand square foot lot. I am a general contractor. And if I provide all the requirements, they are required by the general plan, which is the commercial, the ADA parking, the regular parking stall for the commercial, and then the two parkings for the house, minimum. I ended up with a half of the house that I have now. It's not feasible. It is not feasible. So, that's number one. I only have three minutes. So the second one, I, I'm totally, uh, I will appreciate if you can consider the fact of using a lift. Because if the general plan, it doesn't allow me to go up, I will go down. Then it will be an approaching driveway with a hydraulic lift. It is two different concepts. It's a, it's a lift that's called a canopy. It's very popular in Laguna and also in Hollywood. Which allow, instead of having a tandem garage, which is one behind the other, this one will have one on top of each other. So you go up and down. It's another lift, that instead of going down on the ground, it goes up above. So basically you will lose livable space in the first floor because that car will be out there. So, I need to have, if I'm gonna move on with my last project, I hope, I have a three thousand square foot basement that can be used for parking, which is more than plenty. The one is required by, by a single residence. So in that case, I not have to deal with, like you can see over here, every bus, when we have guests, we have to park cars in the street.
Please try to wrap it up, thank you.
Yeah, it's no parking spaces available.
Thank you very much.
I truly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, um, I think that should, we need to have someone. Okay. Is she gonna talk about three point two? Then I have to recuse, if we're not ready to go there yet, so we'll have to keep that in mind. Do, do you have a card here for her?
Yes.
I do? Joan?
Here we have another speaker, um, it's Don, it's Don.
Hmm?
There's another speaker for this particular.
Uh, your name, sir?
Ron Trossford.
Okay, good, yeah, can you?
I would like to just add my, um, approval to what George said. I think the less regulation we have there, the more creative people can be in taking, doing the best with their property. I suppose that, I have a lot also on Granada, but it's in the first block. Is there any chance of having all residential in that area? It's, again, it's, it's a four, four thousand foot lot.
I, I think that the reason the staff focused on this particular area here is because it's all residential. And when you get into here, you start to have commercial parking and pretty much all commercial on this.
Yeah, I, I understand that the.
There's some mixed-use residential, but there's, you know, this is all, a whole different character. Also you have commercial on the other side of the street. Here you have residential on this side of the street, so that's the difference.
So I, I think the answer is very difficult.
I think what he's saying is very logical and, uh, ask you to consider it.
Thank you. While the, uh, let's see, the public's still open, um, still have three other cards.
Is anybody else left?
Zachary Goomer, Joan Young, and Rabbi Slavin, I guess have, have, have gone, so, okay. We'll just leave, uh, one card there. Okay, with that, we'll, uh, close the public hearing for this section.
All right. Nope, they're scraping the bottom of the barrel with the, uh. Yeah. I think she's laughing at us on video right now, so. So, I think first I'll thank everyone who's still here, you are heroically patient, um, and, uh, I know that this has been quite a slog. I think, just, if, if there's no objections from any of the other commissioners, I think, uh, in the interest of, giving the public as much time back as I can, maybe I'll open the public hearing. So Ms. Fleming can speak and then we can finish up our work, so. All right, so I will open the public hearing and ask, Cindy Fleming, please come up. You've been here as long as we have, so congratulations.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I, I am speaking here tonight, uh, as a member of the Architectural Guild of South Orange County. We were asked to give the, uh, city some advice on height limitations in the MU three point two zone. And so we've prepared a, a, a paper on that, which I believe is in your packages. And at this point, I'll make it short and sweet, I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise, uh, you know, you've got the paper.
Does anyone have any questions about that? I did, I didn't get through all of it, but I got through much of it. Um, it was very comprehensive and I, and I do appreciate it, I'm, I'm gonna finish the rest of it. I thought, I think there's a lot of great information in there, so I'm.
I wonder if she could give just a summary of what?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Okay, um, the synopsis is that the Guild recommends that within this M three point two zone, the street level floor, uh, which would be designed for commercial primarily, would have a minimum floor-to-floor, uh, height of eighteen feet. That allows approximately fourteen-foot ceilings, uh, which is, um, really the current minimum for, for retail, uh, use. And, um, then above that, uh, we're, we're looking at a two-story limitation fronting on El Camino Real. And, uh, so that second floor, floor-to-floor, or floor-to-plate line would be nine feet, uh, with an overall two-story maximum of thirty-six feet as measured from the center of the property line on El Camino Real frontage. The properties in this zone are, there's only a few of them, and they all fall off to the alley behind. So the alley being a greater height within that envelope, um, could potentially have three stories. And at that point, we would say that from the alley, the, the maximum, uh, height would be forty-eight feet as measured from the, uh, center of the property line on the alley. However, it would not, uh, our recommendation is that it not exceed the envelope created by the, um, height limitation on El Camino Real. That being said, uh, to accommodate parking and whatnot, uh, we would encourage that two levels of parking be considered as one, assuming that that's on the alley side. And, um, further recommendations would be that canopies are allowed to extend over the public sidewalk. And then, and then just a couple of cautions. One would be that, uh, these properties, because across the alley are all residential uses, that these properties be looked at in terms of shadow and privacy impacts on the residents behind. And, um, that any, uh, roof decks or, um, uh, appurtenances above the upper level be limited to, 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 to the envelope as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I have one more card, Nick Buchanan.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you for, uh, the, the sticking around so long this evening, you've been very patient. I was actually gonna talk after, you deliberated on the MU three point two, so I kind of got pulled up here a little bit out of order. But the point I was trying to make is a number of, uh, planning commissioners have already met with me, um, regarding a little project that, that I have done, done on, uh, South El Camino Real. As, uh, most of you have already heard my story, I am a resident here in San Clemente and bought a little piece of property based on the language in, um, the general plan that was approved. We all have our own opinions, as we clearly found out a little bit earlier this evening, about what's appropriate for South El Camino Real. But as a resident, um, being aware of the gateway that it presents for anyone coming up from San, uh, from San Diego or the southern portion of San Clemente up El Camino Real as you come into downtown, I've always sort of felt that it could do with a little bit of rejuvenation. So I wanted to applaud this body, the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council for approving the general plan in its current form in, in two thousand and fourteen. Obviously, you went through extensive public outreach and you came up with something that was, in my opinion, at least as a developer, created us with just about enough economic incentive to go and do something there. Hence me standing here and, you know, submitting an application. Obviously, I'm a, I, I want to maintain as much goodwill and credibility with this group as I possibly can because I have an application that's coming along. But I'm a little disappointed that we've kind of backtracking a little bit on some of the good, the good work that was done. You know, that said, um, I wanted to clarify on one little thing, Chris. You know, at least in the staff report, we talked about, we're talking about increasing the height from thirty-three to thirty-five feet. The current general plan as approved today is for mixed-use in that area is forty-five feet and three stories, as it reads, as was presented by Mr. Patches a few weeks ago. And what we're doing now is we're looking to reduce that from forty-five down to thirty-five feet. I think we can still work with that, I think that we'll still see some mixed-use projects done. I do think that, you know, unfortunately, it takes away a lot of the planning commission's ability to, you know, move, move around, do public open space, articulate the building a little bit. And obviously, as an applicant, I'm a little disappointed with that, but, you know, obviously, I want to love to see you move forward with the existing language and hopefully we can see something down there. The particular site I'm looking at is an old gas station, it's been sitting vacant forever, it's, you know, thirty-plus years, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And, um, we'll enter our end game, um, hopefully. And, uh, according to my notes, uh, we're back on the, for Phase Three, well, I'll let you tell us, why don't you?
Yes, for the general plan items, it's gonna be items twenty-two, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine.
Didn't we just cover twenty-seven in our last?
Twenty.
In Phase Two?
Just a second. Just one quick moment here.
That was, uh, three point one, mixed-use three point one. Right, but we covered twenty-seven in the general plan, which is three point one.
Let me, uh, let me just look real quick, I just wanna, I don't want to misspeak. Twenty-seven, wait, hold on. Twenty-two, hold on, twenty-two. Twenty-two and twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-two and twenty-nine. Twenty-two is the architectural overlay. And twenty, twenty-two is the architectural overlay and twenty-nine is the mixed-use three point two. Those are the two, twenty-two and twenty-nine. Twenty-two and twenty-nine. Which is what's on the slide, twenty-two and twenty-nine. Okay? So first I'll go and explain the twenty-two, if I can. And I think actually to jump forward a little bit to avoid the confusion like the last time, I'm gonna highlight which zoning items are in Phase Three. Can I do that, just to cover that? Okay, so that would be sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six for the zoning.
That's what I have here.
Okay. Okay, so, let's go to this change here. Okay, so there are two main types of changes here with this architectural overlay. There's a policy in the general plan right now, we can go, I would recommend that we go there. If you remember, I helped all of you get to a certain place in the land use table. If you go from that point back, I'll lead you to the place that you should look at. So it's, on that same document, the page numbers, it's gonna be, page, um, it's gonna be page fifty. Is everybody there? Page fifty, that same document that we all flipped to. So staff is proposing to modify a policy that's shown here as Section Three of that page at the top. Right now it reads that the architectural overlay, just Spanish, not Spanish colonial, there is a policy here, UD five point oh seven. It says that it was extended from Elk, Elk, on El Camino Real between Palazon and El Portal, which is different than what I've heard from the commission. And at the last, at the study session, I asked the commission, is it? is the commission of the understanding that the architectural overlay was extended between the T-zone and North Beach and from the T-zone to the Interstate 5 freeway? And I was told, yes, that's our understanding. So what I've done is I've clarified this policy to reflect that. So if you look at the wording here, it says now, from, on North El Camino Real between...
Basically, it was painted right here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yes, and then on the other side, I have a separate map for that. Whoa, what just happened now? Great. Okay, here we go. So from here down to here. So that's what's this number, this item. Now, separate from that, earlier I heard that the commission would like staff to look at the area, Los Molinos, that segment there. And the impression I'm getting is that the commission is more in favor of removing that part of the overlay. That's the impression I'm getting, that it's not really consistent with this main idea of having a long corridor of Spanish architecture. That's a different, I need a little bit more clarification.
And then to apply the architectural style that is of Los Molinos.
Yeah, I think we were kind of a little off guard. I'm not, I didn't really realize it was going back in on that street. So I'm one that would reconsider that going more to Los Molinos on the section that goes into Los Molinos.
Okay. That helps me a lot.
I just didn't pick up on it.
Because I wanna draft something that's likely to succeed at the next meeting. So thank you. Okay.
All right, if there's no more conversation on 22, you wanna discuss 29?
Sure.
Okay.
So 29, there's a couple different things to note. So if you go in that same document, so this map is the area in question. So you're gonna see the 29, the purple areas right here. Here, and here. And that's the mixed-use 3.2 area. And in that same document, with the table, let's go to page 13 and 14. Starts on page 13. Really, the part of concern is gonna be really page 14. As the public mentioned, Mr. Buchanan, that the current height limit of that area for a mixed-use project is 45 feet and three stories. And the City Council directed staff to make changes to allow two stories facing El Camino Real. In the process of working on this project, we consulted with the Architectural Guild and Ms. Fleming just mentioned that, what the outcome of that research was. And we carefully considered that input. And with that input, we're proposing changes to the two-story height limit for, on the El Camino Real side of the properties. So there would be a height ceiling, we talked about at the last meeting, and I'll let Jim Hare talk in more detail about that. He's gonna get into more detail. But we're proposing some standards. If you look in that table, it tells you exactly what would be in the general plan. So if we could go to page 14, that would be helpful. So on there, you're gonna see in the height, number of stories table there, part, column, says two stories of building mass facing South El Camino Real. Average height limit, top of roof 45 feet and plate line 37 feet. Now, what that is, if you go back to the last meeting, that's the general standard applied through the property. Then if you look further, there's a ceiling that would extend on the El Camino Real side to ensure that projects are limited to two stories facing El Camino Real. And Jim Hare has visual aids and he'll, that'll help clarify this a little bit. I think the main point to emphasize is that this is consistent with the dialogue that we talked about the last meeting, and Jim Hare will get into more detail.
Up to, on El Camino, up to how many, how many feet?
It would be 35 feet top of roof and a maximum plate line ceiling of 30 feet. So if you look at the Architectural Guild paper, they're saying that the plate line could be limited to 30 feet, but be as low as 27 feet. And that the recommended, their recommendation is for the top of roof to be 36 feet, or proposing 35 feet. So it's pretty consistent. It's not exact.
Question, nod your head, Cindy, if I'm reading this wrong. You'd indicated 14-foot first-floor plate?
18.
18 and 9, so 27 is kind of what you were anticipating. So 30 works fine.
So the main difference is a foot in the top of roof?
Yep.
So that's the first set of changes. Can I move on to the next change?
What sort of dialogue did you have with City Council on this?
On these height changes?
Yes.
They just said, the council directed staff to reduce it to two stories facing El Camino Real.
So they did not talk about the height?
At the moment, when we went to the meeting, we suggested reducing the heights. And through this discretionary process and consulting with the public, we've learned that it would be to reflect current building practices and market conditions. That's how we came up with these numbers. So they'll be presented to the City Council and debated again.
So what was the last thing you said now? That this will be?
Presented to City Council.
City Council.
Yeah, ultimately, it's their decision.
So it's not sent stone?
No.
Well, no, it's, this is a discretionary process. You're gonna make a recommendation to the City Council.
We based our recommendation on two things. One was the basic City Council direction and then also the underlying goal of the zoning district in the first place. If you recall, this particular area, really, nothing has happened much to it since the last general plan was adopted in 93. So the concept was to try and create some opportunity here. So basically, the whole area was upzoned quite a bit. It was, what was the FAR, .5 before or something like that?
.35.
.35, okay.
Yep.
So it, the, both the, the FAR and the height was increased in this area to try and create some new energy in the area and get some development. So we looked at both those things and we incorporated the Architectural Guild and some other design professionals in the process so that we could get an idea of what in the market we'd be looking for and what designers look at when they're trying to design this kind of project.
And when, actually, while we're here, one thing to note, you're gonna notice that there's no number of story limit on the backside of the lots to provide. Staff is, instead, we're limiting the height to a numerical limit and getting away from the number of stories because with sloping lots, sometimes you have split levels or to provide flexibility given the topography back there, we're specifically targeting El Camino Real. That's our approach on this. If we could go to page, is there a question? Okay, okay, okay. If we can go to, let me find this real quick. Okay, page 43. Page 43, staff's recommending a policy be removed that specifically related to standalone residential uses in that section of the city. So it's corridor residential development that are exclusively for residential use. The City Council directed staff to prohibit standalone residential uses in that section of the city. So we're removing, recommending that this policy be removed. And then there's another change on page 49 that also removes mention of standalone residential uses. And there's another change earlier that excludes mixed-use 3.2 area for the general mixed-use policies for this particular topic. Are there any questions about that? So that concludes the general plan part of this item. And then I'll let Jim Hare get into the zoning aspects.
Are there any discussions or questions about 22, Items 22 or 29 in the general plan? If not, does someone have a motion for a straw? Yes. The, stretching the overlay over El Camino Real.
Yes.
29 is the mixed-use 3.2 that we've been talking, just been talking about, the building heights and plate heights and that sort of thing.
Let's do our straw vote.
And it might be helpful to let Jim Hare do his part because it gets a little bit more detail into the height requirements and...
Do we want to, do we want to give a thumbs up to 22 and kind of hold 29 in reserve until we've heard? Okay. Anyone have a motion?
Will we do a straw vote on Item 22 as discussed?
If there were any changes?
It's his, it was his recommendation, yeah.
So your motion is that we are accepting staff's recommendation? And seconded by Vani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? 29 for later. And take us home with 16, 25, and 26, please.
Okay, once again, adopting changes to the zoning map, they're consistent with the same changes you just adopted. We do have an area where to gain consistency with the Centennial General Plan, it was adopted in February, we need to increase the FAR in the darker red and the lighter, salmony color red on the area. The NC2 FAR would increase from .35 to .5 as per the general plan. And the NC3 area would increase from .35 to .75. Again, reflective of what was, what's in the general plan. So that's the zoning, the zoning changes in the NC zones. So let's spend some time on height. You'll recall this graphic from the last time we met. And this indicates how the plate measurement method comes about. We have defined plate. There was some discussion about that definition and its validity. It is the definition that is used in our building department and has been traditionally used to measure plates on the buildings that have been under the use of the word "plate" as it's occurred. So it's got history associated with it as well. So we're kind of sticking with that definition. Again, the measurement is off of El Camino Real. We take the center point of the front property line and establish a plate. There was a question at your last hearing about how the two height limitations work together. You have two instances. There are different gradients of drop down from El Camino Real in both instances here on the right side of the picture. And so there's differences in those gradients. And so where the drop is minor, you get a situation where using the general height limitation, and I can direct you to where all this is written out. But if you use the general height limitation, you could actually conceivably build a little bit higher than that highest plate line. But in this instance, that highest plate line would prevail because you're using the lesser of the two. Where you have a more substantial drop, here's a situation where there's a building component on the back half of the property, for example, and you're using the averaging technique that's called out in the municipal code. So you have, you have the height taken to this point, the height taken from this uphill point, and that line then becomes the average of the two. So if you have a building piece back there, the general height limitation would apply to that building piece. And in some instances, if the building were segmented, it would require the rear of the building to be lower. So for examples, and the general height limitation is 34 feet with top of roof 42 feet in the 3.2 zone. And that's consistent with the overall height limitations that are there. And again, that would be measured using the standard zoning measurement criteria for height. And it would, and it would limit the heights at the rear of buildings where the lot slopes fairly steeply. Where the lot doesn't slope, again, the El Camino Real height plate limitation would prevail. There was also discussion by your commission at our last meeting about making certain we had a two-story appearance on front. And so we've supplemented the regulation. And we have said that in the front 25 feet of the lot, the 25 feet closest to El Camino Real, that you take that midpoint datum and you raise it by two feet, and there's a reason for doing that, that you can then measuring up from that point to the plate only intersect one floor. And then that essentially limits to two floors, that which could occur reasonably between the contact point at the, at the front datum and the front of the property line to here. Because that, that becomes the point below which your first floor needs to be because you can only intersect it once. So the idea then was then to control, that would control mezzanines, it would control anything because you can only intersect one floor plane from that imputed point. So we have two provisions then, the plate height, we actually have three provisions working. The standard measurement of height, the plate height, and then this provision which enforces, and that, and because you have that footage to work with within that forward part of the property, it means that you can obtain the kinds of heights that are talked about in the Guild's literature.
I have a question. Could you go back one slide, please?
I think I can. Yes.
For this example, are you saying in that 17-foot drop example, that first one, are you saying that the blue line would prevail?
Yes.
Because?
That is the general height limitation.
So we're saying, so we're saying here, it's always, so the rule is the lesser of the height calculation or that hard plate line?
Exactly.
Whichever's less.
Exactly.
I'm not clear on that. Now, we have two stories on the 17 drop.
Yes.
We have two stories towards El Camino.
Two, yes.
Yeah, and we have the plate height in red.
Yes.
And we're saying that you can't take that all the way to the back because you'll end up with three stories. That you're only gonna get two and a half with the blue line?
Well, again, it depends on the slope of the property about...
No, I'm saying with that kind of a slope, is that what, is that what's happening?
We're not, we're not calling out a specific on the stories on the back. And this isn't, from the general plan and from a zoning standpoint, both you get into all kinds of concerns about what constitutes below grade and all of those kinds of things. And so we are simply using a height limitation. If you can get three stories into that height limitation, then you're, then you could conceivably do three stories. You might be doing residential back here where you wouldn't be talking about 18-foot or 16-foot volumes on the first floor. You might be talking lower volumes. You might have a low proscenium for the entry to an underground garage, for example, that would use up some of that height. And then you could use the rest, the remainder of the height or the remainder of the mass on the back under that height limitation without regard to how many stories it would appear to be or might be defined in there. We're not trying to define stories. We're trying to give flexibility. The lots are tight the way they are. A lot of underground work is gonna be needed in the way they are. So giving some flexibility for design purposes, articulation, all kinds of reasons, it seemed us not to, not to call out stories as a marker on that, on that side.
I'm still not clear.
Sure.
On the El Camino side, you have two stories with the red line.
Yes.
On the backside, you're only going to the blue. Does that mean that this plate goes up and down?
No, it just, we just have two different means of calculating heights and whichever ends up calculating out lower for any particular element of the building would apply.
Then the blue line would go across to the front? You couldn't have two stories?
Well, but this is, this is how, the way that height is calculated in general is an averaging accounting for grade. So this calculation would occur, this is an example calculation on, on a part of a building that extended over half of the lot, for example. If it were the whole thing, this, this button would come up here and would pierce... If it were the whole thing, this, this button would come up here and would pierce because that number is higher. And so you would end up with an average of that. And, and again, it, it would just calculate based on how you broke the building up using that particular methodology for measuring height. Because it does account for grade. And some of the grades on these are, are multiple grades. But generally speaking, they slope downward. And so there's a, the, the general height limitation tends to apply on building elements to the rear of sloping lots that have the highest degree of slope among these in the, in the three point two zone.
I think something that would help also is you're missing one where you've got a flat pad and then it slopes.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree. These are generic examples.
And I think you need that to really clarify that in that case, that blue line would be quite a bit higher if the, you have a flat pad going halfway to, to the back of the lot before it starts to slope.
Yes, you, you could get in a condition like that. I, I understand, yeah.
Then you get a higher elevation in the backside.
But never higher than the red line.
I think, Wayne, it seems like the red line's too high for him, that you're concerned, Wayne?
No, I, I think we're only talking about, only dealing with one issue here. And I, and I'm concerned that we're, we're not, we're only dealing, dealing with this and not dealing with the amount of square footage that can be used and how that's going to reflect upon parking and that type of issues. I, I just think we're dealing with one thing here when we should be dealing with, with more. That's, that's my concern.
The, the entirety of the development standards for MU three point two are on page twenty of, of exhibit C. And, and there are floor area ratios and other controls that are in there. And those as well are taken from the, from the standards that are contained in the general plan. So that, that deals with, and then parking is obligated, obviously, on a square foot basis by use.
There's no more discussion about these slides. Do you have more, more to go or?
I am complete, sir.
Okay. Do we have, we have these sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six. I assume, do all of these cover misinformation or do they all link in with number twenty-nine in the general plan? Or is there anything else we need to?
Yes.
Cover before we?
To clarify, the sixteen. The sixteen, let me make sure I get this right. So let's go to this. Okay. So sixteen and sixteen and twenty-six are dealing with the neighborhood commercial floor area ratio changes and the architectural relay changes. And twenty-five is the mixed use three point two change.
Okay. Well, just in the interest of whittling it down bit by bit, if some, if there's no, if there's no more discussion on sixteen or twenty-six, someone might want to make a motion for a straw vote if there's no objections to it. Otherwise, we can discuss.
I'll make a motion on all three of them.
Sixteen, twenty-six, and what, twenty-nine? Uh, sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six, and we have twenty-nine for the general plan as well, which we, which is, ties into number twenty-five, that's why. The, the twenty-nine in the general plan and twenty-five...
I would make a motion for all four of those, sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and?
Sixteen, twenty-five, twenty-six in the, in the zoning ordinance and twenty-nine, number twenty-nine in the general plan.
As stated.
Seconded then.
No, we talked, we, we voted on twenty-two already. Except to that extent. Yeah, this is straw vote. Okay, um, it's been moved, seconded by Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All in favor? Wayne opposed. And by my count, we've gone through all the numbers. So if Don is still here, we can let him out of jail. Wake him up.
So at this point, it's a matter of just what, at what date to continue this item to. And there's a, a couple considerations I, I want Jim to primarily lead the discussion. But it's related to public noticing of those new areas that we're talking about potentially adding for that standalone residential. And then also changing the architectural overlay boundaries for the Los Molinos. We would need to public notify those property owners. So I, I leave it to, to Jim to, must need my help, Jim. I'm thinking June third seems like it could be.
Right. Chris informed me that the, the special meeting might not work for, well, these new items that came up because we have to advertise them. You know, the other things we can continue. So, um, there's a number of options. I don't know what the, the planning commission's preference is. We have a heck of a lot in May. And so maybe I just need to go back and think about it. So the best course of action at this point would be, well, would there be any, do you think we need to have, just with your intuition on this? Do we want to look at, just continue this to June first or second or whatever?
June third.
First regular scheduled meeting in June, which is one option, and we can be well prepared and come back to you on that. Or if you think it's going to take more than one meeting to get through this again, although it seems like we did pretty well, you might want to have this continued to a meeting in May. Jim Herr is not available for the second meeting in May, so we could continue it to the special meeting that we're going to be doing. If that's the case, we don't know the date yet, so we'd have to continue it to the next regular meeting and then continue it again to the special meeting.
Now, we, we've, we've provided a number of mostly, mostly agreements, I think, with what you've got.
Doesn't seem like there's a lot.
Yeah, and then there's a few, excuse me, then there's a few items that we gave staff some direction on.
Yes.
Is there a vote we can take to kind of, you know, say, you know, accept the straw, straw, straw votes, but then have staff come back to us just with the items that we asked them for more changes or input on? And then that would be, that should be a much smaller slice of the pie, right?
I don't know if that's possible. I just think I'd ask Mel on that, what he thinks.
Want to think about it?
So is the question then that, that we make the straw votes essentially official votes and then come back with the?
Can't do that.
Remainder because we, we certainly can't do that.
What they're saying, I believe, Mel...
I wasn't sure if that was the intent of, from when we started.
There was a couple of items that required further investigation. And, you know, we would continue the whole item to June third, whatever the date is.
But we come back with those investigation items for further discussion.
Further discussion on some of the items that are kind of left hanging.
That can certainly be done.
You think you'll have a idea of when it would be scheduled after the sixth? I mean, we could continue it to the sixth and then continue it again to date certain.
If I can make a recommendation, I just think we should table it, you know, so we can, we'll just notify the public again. And then we, we can look at it, come up with a date, once we have more information about the noticing deadlines and...
The problem with that, Chris, is that then we wouldn't be able to have it in a meeting in May because we'd have to advertise over again.
Oh, okay.
So what I'd say is, let's continue it to the next meeting. And then will give us time to figure out a strategy and we'll make a recommendation for that. We won't be really, probably be able to hear it in the next meeting, but at least we can, can either continue it to a special meeting or make a decision on how to deal with it.
Then I'll move that we continue this item to our next meeting on May the sixth.
Second.
Is that specific enough for all the little ordinances and naonces there?
That's perfect.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
All your time and efforts, reading.
It was a good session tonight, I think. Thank you very much for all your, all your work.
I think just to avoid confusion, it would be helpful to, for us to number the pages like the city council does.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, or put tabs in it.
We will, we'll put tabs. We'll put tabs in there and I might have to rethink the numbers, but maybe we don't need to now because we've gone through them.
When you totaled out the, the local, the LCP and everything else, it was like three or four hundred pages in the book tonight, so. Okay, with that, will, any new business? There is none. Any old business? There is none. Reports of commissioners, commissioners and staff, anything?
Just one. Wayne's going to be sitting in a design room. And then I would, for my personal preference in scheduling our meetings, I'd much rather have more meetings with less content than...
I agree.
Than...
Yeah, this is packed.
One meeting that you just can't assimilate it all.
I know that on, on twentieth, we already have five items. That makes it pretty hard to discuss the zoning ordinance of the LCP.
The problem is that the G, the general plan and the zoning ordinance will always have to march together here. And it was, I mean, it was tough, but it was, and it's not going to get any better because we got the rest of it to do later. This is just a small accelerated piece. Okay.
Just a quick mention, I, I am sorry, I was going to have a little summary of what we have done so far in the mobility committee, but I had a lot of reading to do this last week and I didn't get to it.
The traffic task force, yeah.
Traffic task force, yes. And, and so I will try to get to that for our next meeting.
We had quite a meeting there. We're still working on a scope of work for the council. And coastal advisory commission, committee will be, of course, next month. And we'll have tentatively the DeFolger Outfall Plan and possibly, and then Lawrence Hamnett to talk to us about sand replenishment. I think I mentioned his name before. He was the project manager for Sandag for the ten beaches they did down there last time. So, and then last night at city council, they considered a, a street sweeping ordinance. And they expanded that to, for kind of telephonic electronic messaging. And like Commissioner, Commissioner Eagles said, signs were a big issue last night, including no more signs as far as signage in the, to post in the, in the neighborhoods of when your street was supposed to be swept. In addition to this, of course, the sign discussion on the Kmart Sears project. So with that...
I've got one comment for, after reviewing the LCP tonight, I want to thank you for all the time you've been putting in on the coastal plan and all.
Yeah.
That committee's done a heck of a job, apparently. A lot more than I thought they'd been doing.
That's a, that laugh. If there's, that'll entertain someone for adjournment.
If there's nothing else, I'll move we adjourn to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting held at six P M. on May sixth, twenty fifteen, in Council chambers at City Hall, located one hundred Avenue Procedio, San Clemente, California.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Taken by Bon, by Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Our M zoning to reflect what is in the general plan. So it's only to make the documents consistent. That's what we're proposing.
Okay. And then finally, are we clear on seven and eight then, or do we need to discuss? Do you want to, we want a straw vote on all four of these then, each individually?
Unless you want to discuss each one separately, I, I encourage you just to take one vote.
Yeah, okay. Then let's go on to seven and eight, I guess, is the next three, or we already discussed everything now. Okay, is everybody in synchronization with seven, eight, twenty-two, and twenty-four?
Right, yes. If that's the case, then I will move that we take a, that we take a straw vote to accept items seven, eight, twenty-two, and twenty-four as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes six zero. Okay.
Yeah, there's a, in the process of evaluating this, there was a, a miss. We actually had a property owner here in the audience that will speak to this later on. But when I was working with the city council, they wanted us to allow the opportunity for existing residential in the residential in the mixed use zones to be able to redevelop. And what happened is, this particular area here, which, when you look here, they're all existing houses. And it's, happens to be in the boundary of what we call the core area. And so as the core area, we don't allow, we don't allow individual residential, it has to be mixed use. And I'm pointing this out because I think it's a bad idea. If you were to take one of these houses out right here and put a mixed use, four, a bunch of residential houses with a zero lot line setback and three stories, it just doesn't make sense at all. Or actually, it's two stories here. If you get that two stories, it doesn't make sense. So what I would propose is for, actually, I'd like to find the question of Wayne, if you... What it proposes, you guys, to give the direction one way or the other. Would you think that it would be a good idea to reconsider this particular area and allow some kind of a, as, I don't know, would be an overlay or what we'd have to work out with Chris and Jim. I address it exactly, and allow this particular area of the core to have the opportunity to be residential.
Want some discussion on that?
Other options would be to just switch it all the way to residential too. Because down here, you can't, there's orange areas that Chris showed you just a little while ago. What we did was we made all this residential when it was part of the mixed use zone. So this, another option would be just to make this residential. So now, right now, it's mixed use, it's part of the...
What's physically on the, on the?
They're all houses.
Okay. They're all residential, right? Yeah, in fact, we just, I think we've improved some, improved cultural heritage.
We can verify this border. I haven't actually gone out and field checked all this. Some of these are parking lots, I think, right here is a parking lot. But, so we can look at that. What I propose, there's two options above the, the least impactful and easier for me to sell to the coastal commission and the LCP is to keep it mixed use and allow residential standalone. Another option would be just to make it all, or keep it how it is.
Which is, which is mixed use?
You'd like direction from us to study those two options and propose the best solution.
And the two options?
Yeah, and it just, do you think it's a good idea?
Well, I think it's a good idea, okay.
I think so.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Now, what are the two options? Mixed use plus standalone, I'm sorry?
I have some photos too. Here's a photo of the area.
Or residential.
Or mixed use plus standalone.
Across the street, you have all the median densities.
We're just, but we're just, let me be clear, we're just giving direction to take another look at this in light of these facts, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a?
I move we take a straw vote to give direction to planning staff to consider the mixed use designation, or reconsider the mixed use designation as either mixed use with a residential element or all residential.
Is it mixed use plus standalone or residential? Is that the two options I, I thought?
And, and council, the reason why I feel comfortable about including this is council gave me really clear direction that they didn't want to prevent people to have houses in this mixed use zone from redevelopment. We have a property owner here that I've personally been working with him for some time on a house that has all these, all the Spanish houses. That's the...
Okay.
So this would give him, this would...
Would give him the option of doing that.
Right.
Okay, so I think to clarify, Bart, that the, the two options that the plan are put out on, just make sure we're all synchronized. Is either look at all residential or mixed use plus standalone type designation for that area, for this particular area. That's, that's straw vote that Commissioner Crandall has made a motion on. Okay, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay. Now, what's the next on the menu here? Are we down to part three where I get to recuse?
Don't we, don't we have to do Exhibit C? I have Exhibit C, pages eighteen through twenty, covers MU three point one and three point two. So probably you would wanna be there for three point one. This is down on page eighteen on Exhibit C. That's, am I, that's what I have on my, in my notes. If I'm wrong, let me know.
And those are the actual, reflect the, Jim, these, these reflect the changes that basically we just talked about, allowing residential in the commercial zone.
Okay, we covered that in the phase one, but we don't have to cover that again now.
Well, unless you wanna look at the actual specific standards, they're in that section. So if you, it specifically says the density is allowed, the height limits and everything else in there. So if you wanna look at those and have comments on those, then give those.
Okay, I don't, I don't need comments on them, I don't know if anyone else does.
Everything is to match what's in the land use table of the general plan.
So, we're basically through with part two of the scheme tonight. Now.
Yes.
Do we still want to let the, the public comment with their card? Do they have a card, or are we, were we pretty clear on this?
I recommend.
We do, I know that Mr. Alvarez wants to speak on this, take the issue out of the others.
Okay. Do we have a card, Eileen? George Alvarez? Let's open the public hearing on this particular issue. Yeah.
Members of the Planning Commission, as you can see, well, I am not live in the area where this plan has been submitted, but I've been having quite, for a long time, I live in this house since nineteen ninety-one. So I am very familiar with the requirements of what I was allowed back then to do and what I will be allowed to do now. It's two different things. I would truly ask you to pass or to include this residence into the newest standalone residential use. Because the problem that we have since last year, I have, I have three sets, three different sets of plans for my, my home. The first one was a three story, we, including the commercial, that it is required today. Then in two thousand fourteen in February, they discontinued that. So no more three stories are allowed on Granada. So now it's two story, it's still requiring commercial. I'm dealing with a four thousand square foot lot. I am a general contractor. And if I provide all the requirements, they are required by the general plan, which is the commercial, the ADA parking, the regular parking stop for the commercial, and then the two parkings for the house, minimum. I ended up with a half of the house that I have now. It's not feasible. It is not feasible. So, that's number one. I only have three minutes. So the second one, I, I'm totally, I will appreciate if you can consider the fact of using a lift. Because if the general plan, it doesn't allow me to go up, I will go down. Then it will be an approaching driveway with a hydraulic lift. It is two different concepts. It's a, it's a lift that's called a canopy. It's very popular in Laguna and also on Hollywood. Which allow, instead of having a tandem garage, which is one behind the other, this one will have one on top of each other. So you go up and down. It's another lift, the, instead of going down on the ground, it goes up about. So basically you will lose livable space in the first floor because that car will be up there. So, I need to have, if I'm gonna move on with my last project, I hope, I have a three thousand square foot basement that can be used for parking, which is more than plenty. The one is required by, by, by singles residence. So in that case, I not have to deal with, like you can see over here, every, when we have gas, we have to park cars in the street.
Please try to wrap it up, thank you.
Yeah, it's no parking spaces available.
Thank you very much.
I truly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, I think that should. We need to have someone. Okay. Is she gonna talk about three point two? Then I have to recuse. If we're not ready to go there yet, so we'll have to keep that in mind. Do, do you have a card here for her?
Yes.
I do? Joan?
Here we have another speaker on, it's Ron, there's another speaker for this particular.
I have a card up there as well.
Uh, your name, sir?
Ron Trossford.
Hey, good, yeah, can you?
I would like to just add my approval to what George said. I think the less regulation we have there, the more creative people can be in taking, doing the best with their property. I suppose that, I have a lot also on Granada, but it's in the first block. Is there any chance of having all residential in that area? It's, again, it's, it's a four, four thousand foot lot.
I, I think that the reason the staff focused on this particular area here is because it's all residential. And when you get into here, you start to have commercial parking and pretty much all commercial on this.
Yeah, I understand that the.
There's a mixed use residential, but there's, you know, this is all, a whole different character. Also, you have commercial on the other side of the street. Here you have residential on this side of the street. So that's the difference.
So, I, well, anyway.
The answer is very difficult. I think what he's saying is very logical and ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. While the, let's see, the public's still open, still have three other cards.
Did anybody else left?
Zachary Goumer, Joan Young and Rabbi Slavin, I guess have, have, have gone, so, okay. We'll just leave the one card there. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing for this section.
All right. Nope, they're scraping the bottom of the barrel with the. Yeah.
I'll come back and we'll close out the meeting.
I think she's laughing at us on video right now, so. So, I think first I'll thank everyone who's still here. You are heroically patient and I know that this has been quite a slog. I think just, if there's no objections from any of the other commissioners, I think in the interest of giving the public as much time back as I can, maybe I'll open the public hearing. So Ms. Fleming can speak and then we can finish up.
Right.
Our work, so, all right. So I will open the public hearing and ask Cindy Fleming, please come up. You've been here as long as we have, so congratulations.
Good evening, Commissioners. I, I am speaking here tonight as a member of the Architectural Guild of South Orange County. We were asked to give the city some advice on height limitations in the MU three point two zone. And so we've prepared a, a paper on that, which I believe is in your packages. And at this point, I'll make it short and sweet. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, you know, you've got the paper.
Does anyone have any questions about that? I did, I didn't get through all of it, but I got through much of it. It was very comprehensive and I, and I do appreciate it. I'm gonna finish the rest of it. I thought, I think there's a lot of great information in there, so I'm.
Could, I wonder if she could give just a summary of what?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's fine.
Okay, the synopsis is that the Guild recommends that within this M three point two zone, the street level floor, which would be designed for commercial primarily, would have a minimum floor to floor height of eighteen feet. That allows approximately fourteen foot ceilings, which is really the current minimum for, for retail use. And then above that, we're, we're looking at a two story limitation fronting on El Camino Real. And so that second floor, floor to floor, or floor to plate line would be nine feet, with an overall two story maximum of thirty-six feet as measured from the center of the property line on El Camino Real frontage. The properties in this zone are, there's only a few of them, and they all fall off to the alley behind. So the alley being a greater height within that envelope could potentially have three stories. And at that point, we would say that from the alley, the, the maximum height would be forty-eight feet as measured from the center of the property line on the alley. However, it would not, our recommendation is that it not exceed the envelope created by the height limitation on El Camino Real. That being said, to accommodate parking and whatnot, we would encourage that two levels of parking be considered as one, assuming that that's on the alley side. And further recommendations would be that canopies are allowed to extend over the public sidewalk. And then, and then just a couple of cautions. One would be that these properties, because across the alley are all residential uses, that these properties be looked at in terms of shadow and privacy impacts on the residents behind. And that any roof decks or appurtenances above the upper level be limited to, to, to the envelope as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I have one more card, Nick Buchanan.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the, the sticking around so long this evening. You've been very patient. I was actually gonna talk after, you deliberated on the MU three point two, so I kinda got pulled up here a little bit out of order, but the point I was trying to make is a number of Planning Commissioners have already met with me regarding a little project that, that I have done on South Al Camino Real. As most of you have already heard my story, I am a resident here in San Clemente and bought a little piece of property based on the language in the general plan that was approved. We all have our own opinions, as we clearly found out a little bit earlier this evening, about what's appropriate for South Al Camino Real. But as a resident, being aware of the gateway that it presents for anyone coming up from San, from San Diego or the southern portion of San Clemente, Al Camino Real, as you come into downtown, I've always sort of felt that it could do with a little bit of rejuvenation. So I wanted to applaud this party, the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council for approving the general plan in its current form in two thousand and fourteen. Obviously, you went through extensive public outreach and you came up with something that was, in my opinion, at least as a developer, created us with just about enough economic incentive to go and do something there, hence me standing here and submitting an application. Obviously, I'm a, I, I wanna maintain as much goodwill and credibility with this group as I possibly can, because I have an application that's coming along. But I'm a little disappointed that we've kind of backtracking a little bit on some of the good, the good work that was done. That said, I wanted to clarify on one little thing, Chris, at least in the staff report, we talked about, we're talking about increasing the height from thirty-three to thirty-five feet. The current general plan as approved today is, for mixed use in that area, is forty-five feet and three stories, as it reads, as was presented by Mr. Patches a few weeks ago. And what we're doing now is we're looking to reduce that from forty-five down to thirty-five feet. I think we can still work with that. I think that we'll still see some mixed use projects done. I do think that, you know, unfortunately, it takes away a lot of the Planning Commission's ability to, you know, move, move around, do public open space, articulate the building a little bit. And obviously, as an applicant, I'm a little disappointed with that, but, you know, obviously, I wanna love to see you move forward with the existing language and hopefully we can see something down there. The particular site I'm looking at is an old gas station. It's been sitting vacant forever, thirty plus years. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and we'll enter our end game, hopefully. And according to my notes, we're back on the, for phase three. Well, I'll let you tell us, why don't you?
Yes, for the general plan items, it's gonna be items twenty-two, twenty-seven and twenty-nine.
Didn't we just cover twenty-seven in our last?
Twenty.
In phase two?
Just a second. Just one quick moment here.
That was three point one, mixed use three point one. Right, but we covered twenty-seven in the general plan, which is three point one.
Let me, let me just look real quick. I just wanna, I don't wanna misspeak. Twenty-seven, wait, hold on. Twenty-two, hold on, twenty-two. Twenty-two and twenty-nine, I'm sorry. Twenty-two and twenty-nine. Twenty-two is the architectural overlay. And twenty. Twenty-two is the architectural overlay and twenty-nine is the mixed use three point two. Those are the two, twenty-two and twenty-nine. Twenty-two and twenty-nine. Which is what's on the slide, twenty-two and twenty-nine. Okay, so first I'll go and explain the twenty-two, if I can. And I think actually to jump forward a little bit, to avoid the confusion like the last time, I'm gonna highlight which zoning items are in phase three. Can I do that, just to cover that? Okay, so that would be sixteen, twenty-five and twenty-six for the zoning.
That's what I have here.
Okay. Okay, so, let's go to this change here. Okay, so there are two main types of changes here with this architectural overlay. There's a policy in the general plan right now. We can go, I would recommend that we go there. If you remember, I helped all of you get to a certain place, the land use table. If you go from that point back, I'll lead you to the place that you should look at. So it's, on that same document, the page numbers, it's gonna be. Page. It's gonna be page fifty. Everybody there? Page fifty, that same document that we all flipped to. So staff is proposing to modify a policy that's shown here as section three of that page at the top. Right now it reads that the architectural overlay, just Spanish, not Spanish colonial, there is a policy here, UD five point oh seven. It says that it was extended from Elk, on El Camino Real between Palazon and El Portal, which is different than what I've heard from the commission in the last, at the. And at the last, at the study session, I asked the Commission, is the Commissioner understanding that the architectural overlay was extended between the T-zone and North Beach and from the T-zone to the Interstate 5 freeway? And I was told, yes, that's our understanding. So what I've done is I've clarified this policy to reflect that. So if you look at the wording here, it says now, from, on North El Camino Real between-
Basically, it was painted right here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yes, and then on the other side, I have a separate map for that. Well, what just happened now? Great. Okay, here we go. So from here down to here. So that's, that's what's, this number, this item. Now, separate from that, earlier I heard that the Commission would like staff to look at the area, Los Molinos, that segment there. And the impression I'm getting is that the Commission is more in favor of removing that part of the overlay. That's the impression I'm getting, that it's not really consistent with this main idea of having a long corridor of Spanish architecture. It's a different, I need a little bit more clarification.
And then to apply the architectural style that is of Los Molinos.
Yeah, I think we were kind of a little off guard. I'm not, I didn't really realize it was going back in on that, that street. So I'm one that would reconsider that going more to Los Molinos on the section that goes into Los Molinos.
Okay.
And I-
That helps me a lot.
I just didn't pick up on it.
Because I wanna, I wanna draft something that's likely to succeed at the next meeting. So thank you. Okay.
All right, if there's no more conversation on 22, you wanna discuss 29?
Sure.
Okay.
So 29, there's a couple different things to note. So if you go on that same document, so this map is the area in question. So you're gonna see the 29, the purple areas right here. Here and here. And that's the mixed-use 3.2 area. And in that same document, the table, let's go to page 13 and 14, start on page 13. Really, the part of concern is gonna be really page 14. As the public mentioned, Mr. Buchanan, that the current height limit of that area for a mixed-use project is 45 feet and three stories. And the City Council directed staff to make changes to allow two stories facing El Camino Real. In the process of working on this project, we consulted with the Architectural Guild and, as Fleming just mentioned, that, what the outcome of that research was. And we carefully considered that input. And with that input, we're proposing changes to the two-story height limit for, on the El Camino Real side of the properties. So there would be a height ceiling we talked about the last meeting, and I'll let Jim Hare talk in more detail about that. He's gonna get into more detail. But we're proposing some standards. If you look in that table, it tells you exactly what would be in the general plan. So if we could go to page 14, that'd be helpful. So on there, you're gonna see in the height, number of stories table there, part, column, says two stories of building mass facing South El Camino Real. Average height limit, top of roof 45 feet and plate line 37 feet. Now, what that is, if you go back to the last meeting, that's the general standard applied through the property. Then if you look further, there's a ceiling that would extend on the El Camino Real side to ensure that projects are limited to two stories facing El Camino Real. And Jim Hare has visual aids and he'll, that'll help clarify this a little bit. I think the main point to emphasize is that this is consistent with the dialogue that we talked about the last meeting, and Jim Hare will get into more detail.
Up to, on El Camino, up to how many, how many feet?
It would be 35 feet top of roof and a maximum plate line ceiling of 30 feet. So if you look at the Architectural Guild paper, they're saying that the, the plate line could be limited to 30 feet, but be as low as 27 feet. And that the recommended, their recommendation is for the top of roof to be 36 feet. We're proposing 35 feet. So it's pretty consistent. It's not exact.
Just a quick question. Nod your head, Cindy, if I'm reading this wrong. You'd indicated 14-foot first-floor plate?
Eighteen.
Eighteen and nine, so 27 is kind of what you were anticipating, so 30 works fine.
So the main difference is a foot in the top of roof? So that's the first set of changes. Can I move on to the next change?
What, what sort of dialogue did you have with City Council on this?
On these height changes?
Yes.
They just said, the Council directed staff to reduce it to two stories facing El Camino Real.
So they did not talk about the, the height?
At the moment, when we went to the meeting, we suggested reducing the heights. And through this discretionary process and consulting with the public, we've learned that it would be to reflect current building practices and market conditions. That's how we came up with these numbers. So they'll be presented to the City Council and debated again.
So what was the last thing you said now? That you're, that this will be-
Presented to City Council.
City Council.
Yeah, ultimately, it's their decision.
So it's not sand and stone?
No.
Well, no, it's, you know, this is a discretionary process. You're gonna make a recommendation to the City Council.
We based our recommendation on two things. One was the basic City Council direction and then also the underlying goal of the zoning district in the first place. If you recall, this particular area, really nothing has happened much to it since the last general plan was adopted in 93. So the concept was to try and create some opportunity here. So basically, the whole area was upzoned quite a bit. It was, what was the FAR 0.5 before or something like that?
0.35.
0.35, okay.
Yep.
So it, the, both the, the FAR and the height was increased in this area to try and create some new energy in the area and get some development. So we looked at both those things and we incorporated the Architectural Guild and some other design professionals in the process so that we could get an idea of what in the market we'd be looking for and what designers look at when they're trying to design this kind of project.
And when, actually, while we're here, one thing to note, you're gonna notice that there's no number of story limit on the backside of the lots to provide. Staff is, we're, instead, we're limiting the height to a numerical limit and getting away from the number of stories because with sloping lots, sometimes you have split levels or, to provide flexibility, given the topography back there, we're specifically targeting El Camino Real. That's, that's our approach on this. If we could go to page, is there a question? Okay, okay, okay. If we can go to, let me find this real quick here. Okay, page 43. Page 43, staff's recommending a policy be removed that specifically related to standalone residential uses in that section of the city. So it's corridor residential development that are exclusively for residential use. The City Council directed staff to prohibit standalone residential uses in that section of the city. So we're removing, recommending that this policy be removed. And then there's another change on page 49 that, that also removes mention of standalone residential uses. And there's another change earlier that, that excludes mixed-use 3.2 area for the general mixed-use policies for this particular topic. Are there any questions about that? So that concludes the general plan part of this item. And then I'll let Jim Hare get into the zoning aspects.
Are there any discussions or questions about 22, Items 22 or 29 in the general plan? If not, does someone have a motion for a straw? Yes. The, making, stretching the overlay over-
Stretching.
El Camino Real.
Yes.
29 is the mixed-use 3.2 that we've been talking, just been talking about, the building heights and plate heights and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Storers travel?
I just don't feel comfortable with how that's going to appear around the alleyway. I think that's gonna have a big impact upon the residents.
And it might be helpful to let Jim Hare do his part because it gets a little bit more detail into the height requirements and-
Do we want to, do we want to give a thumbs up to 22 and kind of hold 29 in reserve until we've heard? Okay. Anyone have a motion?
Will we do a straw vote on Item 22 as discussed?
If there were any changes?
It's his, it was his recommendation, yeah.
So your motion is that we are accepting staff's recommendation? And seconded by Vani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? 29 for later. And take us home with 16, 25, and 26, please.
Okay, once again, adopting changes to the zoning map that are consistent with the same changes you just adopted. We do have an area where to gain consistency with the Centennial General Plan, it was adopted in February, we need to increase the FAR in the, in the darker red and the lighter, salmony color red on, on the area. The NC2 FAR would increase from 0.35 to 0.5 as per the general plan. And the NC3 area would increase from 0.35 to 0.75, again reflective of what was, what's in the general plan. So that's, that's a zoning, the zoning changes in the, in the NC zones. So let's spend some time on height. You'll recall this graphic from the last time we met. And this indicates how the plate measurement method comes about. We have defined plate. There was some discussion about that definition and its validity. It is the definition that is used in our building department and has been traditionally used to measure plates on the buildings that have been under the use of the word "plate" as it's occurred. So it's, it's got history associated with it as well. So, so we're, we're kind of sticking with that definition. Again, the measurement is off of El Camino Real. We take the center point of the front property line and establish a plate. There was a question at your last hearing about how the two height limitations work together. You have two instances. There are different gradients of drop down from El Camino Real in both instances here on the right side of the picture. And, and so there's differences in those gradients. And so where the drop is minor, you get a situation where using the general height limitation, and I can direct you to where all this is written out, but, but if you use the general height limitation, you could actually conceivably build a little bit higher than that highest plate line. But in this instance, that highest plate line would prevail because you, you're using the lesser of the two. Where you have a more substantial drop, here's a situation where there's a building component on the back half of the property, for example, and you're using the averaging technique that's called out in the municipal code. So you have, you have the height taken to this point, the height taken from this uphill point, and that line then becomes the average of the two. So if you have a building piece back there, the general height limitation would apply to that building piece. And in some instances, if the building were segmented, it would, it would require the rear of the building to be lower. So for examples, and, and the general height limitation is 34 feet with top of roof 42 feet in the 3.2 zone. And that's consistent with the overall height limitations that are there. And again, that would be measured using the standard zoning measurement criteria for height. And it would, and it would limit the heights at the rear of buildings where the lot slopes fairly steeply. Where the lot doesn't slope, again, the, the El Camino Real height plate limitation would prevail. There was also discussion by your Commission at our last meeting about making certain we had a two-story appearance on front. And so we've supplemented the regulation. And we have said that in the front 25 feet of the lot, the 25 feet closest to El Camino Real, that you take that midpoint datum and you raise it by two feet. There's a reason for doing that. That you can then, measuring up from that point to the plate, only intersect one floor. And then that essentially limits to two floors, that which could, could occur reasonably between the contact point at the, at the front datum and the front of the property line to here. Because that, that becomes the point below which your first floor needs to be because you can only intersect it once. So that, the idea then was then to control, that would control mezzanines. It would control anything because you can only intersect one floor plane from that imputed point. So we have two provisions then, the plate height. We actually have three provisions working, the standard measurement of height, the plate height, and then this provision which enforces, and, and that, and because you have that footage to, to work with within that forward part of the property, it means that you can obtain the kinds of heights that are talked about in the Guild's literature.
I have a question. Could you go back one slide, please?
I think I can. Yes.
For this example, are you saying, in that 17-foot drop example, that first one, are you saying that the blue line would prevail?
Yes.
Because?
That is the general height limitation.
So, so we're saying, so we're saying here, it's always, so, so the rule is the lesser of the height calculation or that hard plate line?
Exactly.
Whichever's less.
Exactly.
I'm not clear on that. Now, we have two stories on the, on the 17 drop.
Yes.
If two stories towards El Camino.
Two sto-, yes.
Yeah, and we have the, the plate height in red.
Yes.
And we're saying that you can't take that all the way to the back because you'll end up with three stories, that you're only gonna get two and a half with the blue line?
Well, again, it depends on the slope of the property about it.
No, I'm saying with that kind of a slope, is that what, is that what's happening?
We're, we're not, we're not calling out a specific on the stories on the back and, and that this isn't, from the general plan and from a zoning standpoint, both you get into all kinds of concerns about what constitutes below grade and all of those kinds of things. And so we are simply using a height limitation. If you can get three stories into that height limitation, then you're, then you could conceivably do three stories. You might be doing residential back here where you wouldn't be talking about 18-foot or 16-foot volumes on the first floor. You might be talking lower volumes. You might have a low proscenium for the entry to an underground garage, for example, that would use up some of that height. And then you could use the rest, the remainder of the height or the remainder of the mass on the back under that height limitation without, without regard to how many stories it would appear to be or, or might be defined in there. We're, we're not trying to define stories. We're trying to give flexibility. The lots are tight the way they are. Lot of underground work is gonna be needed in, the way they are. So giving some flexibility for design purposes, articulation, all kinds of reasons it seemed us not to, not to call out stories as a marker on that, on that side.
I'm still not clear.
Sure.
On the El Camino side, you have two stories with the red line.
Yes.
On the backside, you're only going to blue. Does that mean that this plate goes up and down?
No, it just, we just have two different means of calculating heights and whichever ends up calculating out lower for any particular element of the building would apply.
Then the blue line would go across to the front? You couldn't have two stories?
Well, but this is, this is how, the, the way that height is calculated in general is an averaging accounting for grade. So this calculation would occur, this is an example calculation on, on a part of a building that extended over half of the lot, for example. If it were the whole thing, this- If it were the whole thing, this, this button would come up here and would pierce because that number is higher. And so you would end up with an average of that. And, and again, i- it would just calculate based on how you broke the building up using that particular methodology for measuring height. Because it does account for grade. And some of the grades on these are, are multiple grades. But generally speaking, they slope downward. And so there's a, it, the, the general height limitation tends to apply on building elements to the rear of sloping lots that have the highest degree of slope among these in the, in the three-point-two zone.
I, I think something that would help also is you're missing one where you've got a flat pad and then it slopes.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree. These are generic examples.
And I think you need that to really clarify that in that case, that blue line would be quite a bit higher if the, you have a flat pad going halfway to, to the back of the lot before it starts to slope.
Yes. You, you could get in a condition like that. I, I understand, yeah.
So then you get a higher elevation in the backside.
But never higher than the red line?
I think, Wayne, it seems like the red line's too high for him. But you're concerned, Wayne?
No, I, I, I think we're only talking about, only dealing with one issue here. And I, and I'm concerned that we're, we're not, we're only dealing, dealing with this and not dealing with the amount of square footage that can be used and how that's going to reflect upon parking and that type of issues. I, I just think we're dealing with one thing here when we should be dealing with, with more. That's, that's my concern.
The, the entirety of the development standards for MU three-point-two are in page twenty of, of exhibit C. And, and there are floor area ratios and other controls that are in there. And those as well are taken from the, from the standards that are contained in the general plan. So that, that deals with, and then parking is obligated, obviously, on a square foot basis by use.
There's no more discussion about these slides. Do you have more, more to go or?
I am complete, sir.
Okay. Do we have, we have these sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six. I assume, do all of these cover misinformation or do they all link in with number twenty-nine in the general plan? Or is there anything else we need to?
Yes.
Cover before we?
To clarify the sixteen, um, the sixteen, let me make sure I get this right. So let's go to this. Okay. So sixteen and, sixteen and twenty-six are dealing with the neighborhood commercial floor ratio changes and the architectural relay changes. And twenty-five is the mixed-use three-point-two change.
Okay. Well, just in the interest of whittling it down bit by bit, if some, if there's no, if there's no more discussion on sixteen or twenty-six, someone might want to make a motion for a straw vote if there's no objections to it. Otherwise, we can discuss.
I'll make a motion on all three of them.
Sixteen, twenty-six, and what, twenty-nine? Uh, sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And we have twenty-nine for the general plan as well, which we, which is, ties into number twenty-five. That's why. The, the twenty-nine in the general plan and twenty-five...
I would make a motion for all four of those. Sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and?
Sixteen, twenty-five, twenty-six in the, in the zoning ordinance and twenty-nine, number twenty-nine in the general plan.
As stated.
Second, yeah.
And twenty-two, general plan?
No, we talked, we, we voted on twenty-two already.
Oh, sorry.
Except for that.
This is straw vote.
Yeah, this is straw vote.
All straw votes.
Okay. It's been moved, seconded by Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
Uh, all in favor? Wayne opposed. And by my count, we've gone through all the numbers.
We can invite Don.
So if Don is still here, we can let him out of jail. Wake him up.
He's back table.
So at this point, it's a matter of just what, a what date to continue this item to. And there's a, a couple considerations I, I want Jim to primarily lead the discussion, but it's related to public noticing of those new areas that we're talking about potentially adding for that standalone residential. And then also changing the architectural overlay boundaries for the Los Molinos. We would need to public notify those property owners. So I, I leave it to, to Jim to, unless he needs my help, Jim. I'm thinking June third.
Right. Chris informed me that the, the special meeting might not work for, well, these new items that came up because we had to advertise them, you know, the other things we can continue. So there's a number of options. I don't know what the, the planning commission's preference is. We have a heck of a lot in May. And so maybe I just need to go back and think about it. So the best course of action at this point would be, well, would there be any, do you think we need to have, just what's your intuition on this? Do we want to look at, just continue this to June first or second or whatever?
June third.
First regular scheduled meeting in June, which is one option. And we can be well prepared and come back to you on that. Or if you think it's going to take more than one meeting to get through this again, although it seems like we did pretty well, you might want to have this continued to a, a meeting in May. Jim Hare is not available for the second meeting in May, so we could continue it to the special meeting that we're going to be doing. If that's the case, we don't know the date yet, so we'd have to continue it to the next regular meeting and then continue it again to the special meeting.
Now, we, we've, we've provided a number of mostly, mostly agreements, I think, with what you've got.
It doesn't seem like there's a lot.
Yeah, and then there's a few, excuse me. Then there's a few items that we gave staff some direction on.
Yes.
Right? Is there a vote we can take to kind of, you know, say, you know, accept the straw, straw, straw votes, but then have staff come back to us just with the items that we asked them for more changes or input on? And then that would be, that should be a much smaller slice of the pie, right?
I don't know if that's possible. I just think I'd ask Mel on that. What do you think?
Want to think about it?
So is the question then that, that we make the straw votes essentially official votes and then come back with the?
No, can't do that.
Remainder? Because we, we, we certainly can't do that.
No, what they're saying, I believe, Mel...
I wasn't sure if that was the intent of, from when we started.
Is, is that there was a couple of items that required further investigation. And that, you know, we would continue the whole item to June third or whatever the date is.
But we come back with those investigation items for further discussion.
Further discussion on some of the items that are kind of left hanging.
That can certainly be done.
You think you'll have a idea of when it would be scheduled after the sixth? I mean, we could continue it to the sixth and then continue it again to date certain.
I, if I can make a recommendation, I just think we should table it, you know, so we can, we'll just notify the public again. And then we, we can look at it, come up with a date once we have more information about the noticing deadlines and...
The problem with that, Chris, is that then we wouldn't be able to have it in a meeting in May because we'd have to advertise over again.
Ah, okay. Sorry.
So what I'd say is, let's continue it to the next meeting. And then we'll give us time to figure out a strategy and we'll make a recommendation. We won't be really, probably be able to hear it in the next meeting, but at least we can, can either continue it to a special meeting or make a decision on how to deal with it.
Then I'll move that we continue this item to our next meeting on May the sixth.
Second?
Is that specific enough for all the little ordinances and naonces there?
That's perfect.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
All your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Reading.
It was a good session tonight, I think. Thank you very much for all your, all your work.
And next time, I think, just to avoid confusion, it would be helpful to force to number the pages like the city council does.
Yeah, we will.
So we can...
Yeah, or put tabs in it.
Little tabs, where's the?
We will. We'll put tabs. We'll put tabs in there. And I might have to rethink the numbers, but maybe we don't need to now because we've gone through them.
When you total out the, the local, the, the LCP and everything else, it was like three or four hundred pages in the book tonight. So, okay. With that, will, any new business? There is none. Any old business? There is none. Reports of commissioners, commissioners and staff? Anything?
Just one. Wayne's going to be sitting in a design room. And then I would, for my personal preference in scheduling our meetings, I'd much rather have more meetings with less content than...
I agree.
Than...
Yeah, this is packed.
One meeting that you just can't assimilate it all.
I know that on, on twentieth, we already have five items.
Okay.
That makes it pretty hard to discuss the zoning ordinance of the LCP.
The problem is that the G, the general plan and the zoning ordinance will always have to march together here. And it was, I mean, it was tough, but it was, and it's not going to get any better because we got the rest of it to do later. This is just a small accelerated piece. Okay.
Just a quick mention. I, I am sorry. I was going to have a little summary of what we have done so far in the Mobility Committee, but I had a lot of reading to do this last week.
The Traffic, the Traffic Task Force, yeah.
So I will, Traffic Task Force, yes. And, and so I will try to get to that for our next meeting.
We had quite a meeting there. We're still working on a scope of work for the council. And Coastal Advisory Commission Committee will be, of course, next month. And we'll have tentatively the DeFolger Outfall Plan and possibly, and then Lawrence Homnatt to talk to us about sand replenishment. I think I mentioned his name before. He was the project manager for Sandag for the ten beaches they did down there last time. So, and then last night at city council, they considered a, a street sweeping ordinance and they expanded that to, for kind of telephonic, electronic messaging. And like Commissioner Eagles said, signs were a big issue last night, including no more signs as far as signage in the, to post in the, in the neighborhoods of one-year streets were supposed to be swept. In addition to this, of course, the sign discussion on the Kmart Sears project. So with that...
I've got one comment for, after you're doing the LCP tonight, I want to thank you for all the time you've been putting in on the coastal plan and all.
Yeah.
That committee's done a heck of a job, apparently. A lot more than I thought they'd been doing.
That's a, that laugh.
If there's...
That all entertained someone for adjournment?
If there's nothing else, I'll move we adjourn to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting, which is held at six PM on May sixth, twenty fifteen, in Council Chambers at City Hall, located one hundred and eighty proceedo, San Clemente, California.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Taken by Bon, by Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six-zero.